Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the September 5th, 2018 meeting of the Danville Boyle County Planning and Zoning Commission. We thank you for being here and appreciate your attendance. We begin our meeting in prayer as tradition. "I God in Father in Heaven, we thank thee for this most beautiful day and all the blessings of it, the health you've given us that led us to be up and about again another day on your grand and glorious earth. We thank thee for this community we live in, this country we live in, the freedoms we enjoy, the safety and protection we've been blessed with. We pray that those things will continue and we would always remember to give thanks for them. We pray for our servicemen and women who are serving our country to defend our freedoms and protect our rights, that you will watch over and care for them, let those conflicts be resolved and bring them home to their loved ones as soon as possible. We pray today that the decisions we make here will be for the betterment of this community and for all those involved. Pray to continue to watch over and care for us, bless us, protect us, keep us safe in all things. Pray in Christ's name, amen." Item C, approval of minutes, regular meeting, August 1st, 2018.
I make the motion to approve.
Jeff moves, we approve. Suzie seconds. Question, discussion on the move, motion, excuse me, to approve minutes. Hearing not all in favor, vote unanimous. Financial report, July 2018. Steven, you have that?
Yes, sir. No real comment on that, except I'll just point out, just talking to a gentleman there, you see the bank balances on page one, Farmers Bank, and then our letters of credit. And then just point out on the second page of the finance report, had a pretty good July, took in $8,000 in fees, varied for the different categories, which equates to about sixteen and a half percent of our fiscal year number in the first month. But I did see August already, and they've dropped substantially. We had a pretty slow August, but you know, the goal is to stay on that path of the fees for the whole year to hopefully end up at $48,000. I'll be glad to answer any of the questions on the finance report. The itemized transactions and the bill list are on there that match up with the balance sheet.
Questions or discussion on the financial report, July? I'll make the motion, we approve. Terry moves, we approve.
Say it.
Jeff seconds. Question, discussion on the motion to approve. Hearing not all in favor, vote unanimous. Letters of credit, Center Estates, and Maple Tree.
Yeah, this should be pretty standard when we get to this part of the agenda, but unfortunately, we've got two items here. They're going to take a tad bit of time that we need to work through. We've got one of the developers here, and we need to, I need to point out some things to you guys. Before I do, I'm going to ask this gentleman inside if there's a light we need to turn off so you guys can see the screen better than what it has outside. Turn off or just barely. There you go. Perfect. So this is Center Estates, and the developer, Mr. Barry Metcalf, is sitting right over here to my left. We've got an issue here that we need to talk about as a planning commission. As you guys know, we hold letters of credits for developments. We hold those for a number of years. We do those annually. We renew those. At some point, the intention is to get done, and if we're not done, we call that letter of credit or cash that letter of credit, convert it to cash. We take the developer's money, put it in our escrow account with anticipation that A, forces developer to get done, or B, we finish it, which is what we're going to talk about on the next one. This is Center Estates. It's out here on Highland, and what Mr. Metcalf did was, these are several apartments, and you know, I've heard other folks talk about what they think of these, but these are new apartments, single, one-bedroom apartments, and as soon as he opened up a building, they were rented. There are reasonable rents. These are folks that need these kind of rents, and these are viable apartments in our community that just show there's, there's needs for affordable living and affordable apartments. But regardless of that, he's, he's done this project, and hopefully this thing will work. And what we bonded at $130,000 was the drainage, the road, Mr. Metcalf built a new street down through here, and then dual sidewalks on this side, as well as the sewer connection. So all of this was bonded at $130,000, and, and Mr. Metcalf has now completed the project or he's getting to the point where he's finished, and he's ready to move on. The problem that we have is, in talking with the city engineering department, they don't think we need, that we're at the point we need to be to move on. So the planning commission, we have to make a decision. We either release this letter of credit, or we have to call the letter of credit in some amount to deal with the deficiencies in the project. I know Barry's not going to like me saying the word deficiencies, but at this point, is where we're at. The drainage is in. The city's looked at the drainage. They tell me it works, so I'm going to move on from that. The sidewalks were never obtainable here for various reasons. All of these is up here, by the way, you guys. There's no sidewalks in this area. There's none this way. There's none along this road. This developer was required to build sidewalks over here simply because that's the rule. You build sidewalks when you build a street. Although the subregs give us a little bit of wiggle room to do some things, it was interpreted that you build a street, you build two four-foot sidewalks. So after much discussion, we, we struggled figuring out, and Barry and I have met out on the site a few times, walked the site, talked about this. There was just no physical way that sidewalk could be built because there's utilities in there, there's some different infrastructure, the drainage component that had to be, the ditch at the bottom, just a lot of problems. So what Barry did, Mr. Metcalf did, and this is the landscape plan that was in the document too, and by the way, these were done several years ago. And interesting enough, the landscaping wouldn't work either because there's utilities. So we, we've had to work around several projects that when the site plan came in back whenever, you can see utility easements, you can see curb cuts, and the landscape plan, which the developer did, was never going to work on that southern side because of the utilities. So we've had to do some things to make all this work. And this is the southern side down there. You've got electric, you've got water lines, this, there's a ditch there that handled the drainage. There was no way the landscaping was going to work there, and you can, can't see it well in the picture, so we've shifted it up the hill a tad bit just to make it work. Reason Mr. Metcalf's here, and he's a tad bit frustrated, and I'll just tell you why here in a second, he needed some guidance on the sidewalks. The left side was, again, was never going to work going up the side. Around the outer edge, he wanted some guidance from someone, the city, us. All I could tell him was, hey, you need, the city's telling me you need to build what's on the plan. So Mr. Metcalf went out there and built the sidewalk, starting at the trailer park there. The water heads across the street to a fairly big hole on the other side of that sidewalk. And then he came up the hill, now we're looking south. He came up the hill and finished the sidewalk with the ADA inserts there, whatever we call those, no-slip sections. So he's of the opinion, hey, I've got this done. I want my bond released. Well, I showed this to the city, and the city said this is unacceptable, and they will not accept this sidewalk. And what they've told me is, it needs to come out and be reconstructed. Of course, Mr. Metcalf's not happy about that, and, and part of his issue is, well, I wish someone would have told me or gave me guidance, but at the end of the day, I think we've got to fall back on, this was your plan, this was the requirement. We still haven't built that inside or that western side of that sidewalk because it can't be built. And again, the city has said that's okay because it doesn't really go anywhere, nor is it feasible, but they said, we want that outside built, and we want it built correctly. And again, what we ended up with was this product that's not acceptable to the city at this point. I asked the city engineer to be here, I, I didn't ask him to be here today. I just ran by this morning to see if he was available because this kind of came up literally in the last couple of days. And Barry wants to get the bond released and move on to another project, another community, but unfortunately, we're stuck right here, which is, this either has to be reconstructed or accepted. And if it's reconstructed, that's why there's a request on the agenda to call the bond in an amount of $50,000. The sidewalks wouldn't cost $50,000 to build, but to tear those out and do some modifications down here at this hole, it's going to need a rail or something. That is a sheer drop-off on the other side. And obviously, you can tell the water's moving right across the, the hill there. Obviously, there's a cut in the curb, and it gets right back to the whole idea of this drainage system is, I was told was put in correctly, but clearly, it's coming through the sand filter, hitting the ditch, and then it goes across the street, over the street to that hole on the other side. So it's not piped across there. It kind of free flows across the street. Well, we'll let you tell, say that, now Barry, we're not going to argue about that because there's a reason why there's a hole there and all that gravel's washed out, and I, and so the water's moving across the street. Again, I'm over the drainage situation. If, if the city's good with it, we'll move on, we'll focus on the sidewalk. But we clearly have a hole there that's taking the water, and we've got the sidewalks exposed on the bottom and the gravel washed out, and a cut in the curb for a reason. So we've got some housekeeping to do to finish this up, and Barry and I have been trying to work together on this. You guys are going to have to give us some direction. We're either calling this bond or we're releasing it. This is the last meeting we have before it expires, although we have about 30 days to get this finished. But we won't meet again, and we have to call the bank and say, hey, we're, we're going to take the developer's money, or we can release the bond with the promise that we get all this corrected by September 30th. And Barry wants to speak to you guys and, and tell you kind of the situation, and we'll be glad to answer any questions you guys have on any part of this. But we've got to get some resolution today so we can move forward and either call the bank and say, we need to cash this bond, or release the letter of credit or let it timeout on the zone by the end of the month. So Barry, or you guys want to ask me any questions or anything you guys have concern about?
I guess, do we know what it would cost or entail to bring it up to the standards that the city is looking for?
City said $20 a running foot on the sidewalk, which is a tad bit higher than we talked about when we just did Hunt Farms, but they said $20 a running foot would be the bond amount we'd need to keep. City engineer has said, conceptually, he's okay with not building the side on the left, but as you can see at the top of the drawing we hand drew in, he, he said he'd like to have a crosswalk, and then maybe a little another stub, a sidewalk up to the north, but he wants that whole section corrected on the right. So if we were putting in new sidewalks, they're estimating $20 a running foot for that whole run, crosswalk, go up to the north. To retrofit some things, put the rail in and do some minor things, the number was estimated at $50,000. And we have to make a decision and probably call the bank tomorrow and get the call in because it takes some time to process a cash out on the letter of credit. So Barry, I'll let you jump in here if you've got to say anything, or?
Yes, sir. Do you have the viewer force for me, please? Okay. The first thing I'd like to do is address this sidewalk, and I did build it to city specifications where I could. It's hard to see it, but there is a utility pole right there. Then to get this to line, the two roads had to line up. That's George Martin, and we did, we did that as planned on the plans. And for about 30 or 40 feet, we did not have the space to move to what would be our left. That, that is literally the, the property line. So I had to run it next to the curb. But as soon as I got the space, we put a two, my guidance was that we needed a two-foot space between the sidewalk and the curb, and the sidewalk has to be four feet. So the sidewalk is four feet. I was also given guidance that they wanted the pavers to be used, and I got those from Mr. Byerly, and they're for the blind, and I put them on both ends. And it's the same exact, and he told me how to install them, and it's the same thing that's up and down Houstonville Road where they've done that. So it's, it's sort of, sort of hard for me to see why this is out of compliance. You know, you have to, to build with what you've got. As far as drainage is not, I think everybody is happy with the, the drainage plan. The sand drain actually goes across the road underneath, and it's not a part, no, it doesn't go that way. It's straight down, right there. You can see where the sand drain is. It sort of looks like a swim pool on there. And all of that was, was taken care of, and, and I haven't had anyone that was dissatisfied. I think Steve just, you know, it's a complex development. We have put in 18 trees and 24 butterfly bushes throughout this area. It made no sense in the long term to put them down by the road because we have cable, we have a spectrum cable, KU electric, water, all right next to the road. And if you have a problem with any of it, then all the trees have to come up. But we did plant butterfly bushes all the way down through there, so that I thought that was a, I mean, it's, I find them to be beautiful, and I want plenty of monarch butterflies. So I realize that there's probably some discrepancies that we need to take care of, but as far as, I'd like everybody to go out there and look at the sidewalk and, and take a tape measure and see that it's 48 inches wide, and that, that the, between the curb and the sidewalk is 24 inches. And I just, it's hard for me to believe that this is not going to meet city specifications. And you also see up there at the end why we had to move next to the curb. And I'd be glad to answer any, any questions on this, on these issues.
Was the city saying the entire sidewalk has to come out, or just part of it?
This is a challenge we've got. We have timing and staff, and it's just us. We attempted to meet onsite several times. Barry and I have met onsite, walked the property. City staff's gone out there at different times and sort of just viewed it on their own and reported back, but we haven't had an opportunity where all of us could be there at one time for various reasons. So we've, we've done it. The city engineer, I don't know, went out, he may have drove by, but we talked about it from a picture view, and I said, look, this meeting's coming up. We need to talk about this bond. We're either releasing or calling it. He looked at the picture and said, that's not going to work. That's not going to work. It needs to be revised, call the bond. And then, of course, I'm like, what amount? Well, $20 a running foot. Let me call one of my guys to talk back. It needs to be at $20. $50,000 ought to, ought to work. I don't know what needs to actually be corrected, tore out, or completely revised. At this point, he just looked at it and said, it's not going to work. Yes, sir?
I think we have to get more information from the city to, that's, it's not going to work. It's not going to help us to vote on anything.
Well, but our problem is, we can't miss this opportunity. I agree with you. We need, we need a, we need a joint meeting here and say, exactly, what's the plan? What are we calling? What, what can Mr. Metcalf get done by September 30th? But if we don't take some action to put the call in, and we just wait it out, we can't call the bank and say, cash it. We almost have to put the, you guys give me the authority to call the bond contingent on a meeting, and maybe we get a week to try to sort this out, and if I don't get it, I have to call, I need to call first Southern and, and say, it's going to take a couple of weeks for them to process this, and we only have till September 30th to get the call in because you guys don't meet again until October 3rd.
Well, I'm just saying though, that the, you're asking us to vote on something, and they, they haven't given us any information on what needs to be done.
Well, they said it, they gave us that much that it needs-
It seems like we're, you're, you're doing, you guys have been out there doing some things, and just a drive-by by the city saying it isn't acceptable doesn't allow us to have the information that we need to make a responsible judgment. I would, I would feel irresponsible to judge based on it isn't going to work. I mean, that's just not a good answer from an official of the city.
I understand it.
I'm sorry, but I-
Well, it's a little more detailed than that. We've gone back and forth-
Well, I mean, that's what you said. I mean, I'm just going by that.
Yeah. Well, that, that's not going to work, but I think in general, are we going to build the sidewalks on the left versus the right? We went through this for two, three weeks just trying to get an answer, clarification whether we're building two sides or one side. There initially was some confusion that the city was going to build these on behalf for Mr. Metcalf, but that was kind of just some back and forth between you guys that maybe didn't work out. He was under impression the city was going to build this, and he didn't have to build it. So once we ironed all that out, he, he knew we were down to the wire, so he got his contractor out there and go ahead and got the concrete laid. When I showed the city, they said it wouldn't work, and that's all I've heard. At the end of the day, Vince, I guess, we're the ones holding the bond. It's our subdivision regs, the planning commission. The city accepts the stuff when it's built to the spec. It's our responsibility to, when we approve the site plan, then bond the project, the city oversees the bond as far as looking at the estimate, but then it's our role to make sure this thing gets done timely within the period. We have to coordinate with the city because we don't have full-time engineering staff. So you know, the plan was that, and we're deviating it from slightly, and so the city's giving us some guidance, but at this point, is that sidewalk acceptable? What, what the city engineer told me was, it was not. And he, and he thought we should call the bond as a safety net, tell him to correct it. And again, at that point, I think that's something you and them would have to talk about. What is the corrective action? What's acceptable? Could we just fix that corner? But without a doubt, something's going to have to be addressed down at this hole. If you haven't been down there, if you're walking on that sidewalk, there's a hole to the right side of you that's taking water from that mobile home park. It's a five, six-foot hole right there that's going to need some kind of rail or some kind of safety element so as you walk across that sidewalk. The other part, this sidewalk going up above the curb and this, again, I don't know what they want, but he, he said that wasn't acceptable. So it's a tear-out, rebuild scenario, Vince, that we, right at this point, do not have guidance on, and we're right at the only meeting we have to make a call before the bank. We will miss that opportunity. Yes, sir, Jim?
I've been working on this, trying to close this out and get guidance for six weeks. This is not a matter of non-compliance. That, and the reason I say that, I, I know that you all run into people that say, I'm not going to do that, and that's not me. You've been out there at least three times. I've met with Mr. Byerly. I've met with, with anybody that would come out and talk to me. My guidance was, they've decided that we want you to build that sidewalk on what would be right here, the right side of the road. And we immediately got to work on it. What it's been in for two weeks, and, and I built it with the guidance of, we want two feet between the curb and the sidewalk, and we want a four-foot sidewalk. And we built it, number 57 gravel under it and steel throughout, so it's, it's not going to fall apart. And you know, if, if, this $50,000, that's a tremendous amount of money. The bank, the bank is not going to be happy with me at all. And I just, I'm sort of gotten to the point, okay, you know, I keep doing these things and nobody's approving anything, and nobody's giving me any guidance. And it's frustrating for me because I'm a person who wants to get things done. And I would ask this, this council to, to go out there and, and look at the work, and since then, we've done, we continue to improve the property as well. That's, that, all of my property, I keep up, and there's no trash, and, and we try to do a good job on everything that we do. And thank you, thank you for hearing me today. Yes, sir. Probably 250 feet of, of sidewalk. And see, I think it cost me $6,000 in concrete and I think $6,000 in labor, labor costs. Why it would, for, it's, I have no concept of why somebody would want to tear that out. I mean, I understand that there was an area where we couldn't put a curb in, but I'm sure that Mr. McAnley wouldn't want me to build over on his property either. Because that's where that meets, there at the end of George Martin and where George, the new part of George Martin starts, all the way up there at the, the very top. And that's right where 10th Planet is, if I'm trying to describe, because it doesn't show that. And of course, in front of 10th Planet is Advanced Auto and Aldis.
Henry, you got any thoughts, advice, or suggestions on this?
Mr. Metcalf-
It seemed to be kind of a quandary here as to what to do.
I was curious about what objection you might have to calling this thing as a safety net and holding those funds and then subject to next meeting approving some kind of plan that has the city sign off. Would you object to doing that?
Yes, sir. I've been looking for that guidance for a while. I want to close out this project. I have been working towards that, whether it was our landscaping plan or this, or these sidewalks, which I think are the, I don't think the drainage, landscaping are, is, is an issue. I think it's come down to this sidewalk, and, and you know, what do you want me to do? I, I disagree that the sidewalk needs to be torn out. I think if you, the council goes and, and looks, looks at it, you'll say, what else could he do?
Well, but Mr. Metcalf, you understand our subregs require that we have sign off from the legislative body, and we're in this time crunch with the letter of credit. So what I'm asking is, if we can do, do this as a safety net and, and call the amount requested, holding it until the next meeting, until, and, and kind of set a deadline for the city in that way, and ask for them to provide feedback by then, or else, you know, we can release it subject to some plan that you and Mr. Hunter are able to work out.
Yes, sir. I'm amenable to that. It's, it's never, on my end, been a, an issue of non-compliance. Would you, would you agree with that? I mean, I've been trying to work with them to get this thing done and closed out, and that's, that's where I'm at. That's, that's where I'm at now. That's, that's what I want to do.
So Henry, what you're suggesting is, we're calling the-
Call it in the $50,000 amount that we had talked about as a safety net and-
For 30 days, or?
Right. Before our time is expired to do so, and then at the next, at the next planning commission meeting, we'll have some kind of feedback from the city, or else we will release the money that we've called back to Mr. Metcalf.
I would make that motion. Jeff moves that we make that motion to call the letter?
Vince seconds.
Vince seconds. Question, discussion on the motion?
My, my question on the motion is, Steve, is that agreeable to you? Does that satisfy?
Yeah. I thought I heard he said it was.
I'm fine with whatever the planning commission decides on that.
Yes.
So I got a question. So is it just that a plan is in place, or is all the work have to be completed by the city? Just a plan in place?
Any other questions? Hearing not all in favor? Vote unanimous.
Thank you all very much.
Number two, letters of credit, Maple Tree.
All right. And again, and I apologize, there's a lot of folks here about another case on the agenda, but we, we've got some housekeeping here that unfortunately we have to work through. Those are backwards. There you go. All right, Maple Tree. You guys know about this one. This won't take that long. Maple Tree has a drainage problem there that we are, we are currently holding money on. As you guys know, this bond was called in 2003? Yeah. The bond was cashed in 2003. It's been sitting for 15-plus years. What lacked on the property was the drainage basin was never constructed by the developer. So there was supposed to be an inlet on the end of the cul-de-sac, a pipe down the hill, and a basin constructed right here. Basin was never built. It's just a straight pipe down the hill. Neighbors are frustrated. The project's never been done. We've been holding the money 15 years. We've got approximately 20-some thousand dollars, $23,000. I came to you guys a few months ago and said, hey, the plan, I met with the HOA, and the plan is, we're going to try to build this ourselves. I need to do a hydraulic model of the neighborhood first to understand if the drainage is feasible, and is this even going to work? It was the original plan. And then possibly, we'd get a bid-ready document that we could put out on the street, bid it, and build it ourselves, or work with the city. Kendall Wise with Vantage did Phase One, which was the hydraulic model, which went out in your packet. It's a well-written document. That's $2,500. So what I'm asking you today is, give me the authority to release the cash- So what I'm asking you today is give me the authority to release the cash, reduce the cash bond by at least $2,500 so I can pay his first bill. But I've met with the HOA, again, I want to explain to you guys what we need to do to build this. And this is frustrating when we have to do this, but funny enough, this is a gift to us to some degree. Because it turns out this, when Kendall did this model, it turns out this original basin wasn't the best plan. Had that developer built that basin and we released the letter of credit, and now he's gone, 10 years later, guess what? That would have not worked. That was a bad design back initially, it never got built. So here we are, and we're going to build the right solution the second time around. This is what we need, which is a pipe. We don't need a basin, we need to pipe this to Jackson Park, to a basin, and the city's given us the green light to do that. So what we do, this is the original pipe, and the basin was going to be here, and I'll show you that. The better solution is to put a pipe across country with four inlets to catch the water. And the reason being, and that's why the design, and we appreciate what our new model shows, is this was the original Maple Tree watershed, and this was the basin that was supposed to be built, and the plan was the water to go down here, sit here, and go somewhere. Well, there's a bunch of sinkholes opening up, as well as straight pipe in the water. This watershed comes to the same point. So this basin would have never worked with the watershed, we've got two watersheds going, trying to share the same basin that doesn't have the capacity to deal with the water. So had the developer built this basin, it would have been consumed by this water anyhow because it's heading downhill, going to this detention area naturally. So the plan is, again, to build a pipe, pipe the water, and those inlets that you guys see up on that north side of that drawing is going to catch that water coming down the hill. This water's going to come in here and all of it's going to flow, and we'll have capacity in that basin in Jackson Park. At this point, what we need for Phase Two is to do a bid spec, set of construction drawings. What Kendall has provided us is the model. With all the flood information, it reads like a science paper, you guys can read all those, one-year flood, one-hour and 10-hour and 100-year. But these are some of the elements that have to go in with those inlets. And at this point, what we need is a full set of construction drawings, which is another $2,500. We're not spending the planning commission money, we're spending that bond money. So if we spend $5,000, approximately, we'll have about $18,000 to construct that pipe. We'll have to bid that out or work with the city. But we met with the HOA last week, they're all for this, they voted, actually formally voted, to recommend that you guys move forward with this and let us get this built, hopefully in this construction season. Again, after 15 years, we got no basin, we got sinkholes opening up at the bottom of this hill, we got a lot that's unusable by that owner, we got a neighbor next door that's dealing with some serious erosion problems, we've got trees that were built on top of this pipe, it's just, again, Kendall's drawing shows that on this side. I mean, this thing was never built right and it sat, we got vegetation on top of a plastic pipe that was supposed to carry water downhill to no basin. So it's a mess, and it needs to be resolved, and we're going to try to do it. Yes, sir.
Is there any easement issues since we're going from public to, from private to public?
It needs, that is something we need to work through. We have, we have an easement already on the plat to this point. So to get from this point over to Jackson Park, I've got a verbal okay from the city that they're fine with that. That's where we may want to work with them. They've said that they'd be interested in trying to install this, and that we reimburse the city for that cost. The issue there is timing. The neighborhood'd like to see this get done, and we'd have to work with the city, they may not be able to do it till next year. They've got several big projects, Second Street Bridge and the Streetscape, Fire Station. So they've got a lot of projects. So they offered to help, and because they do that, city works well with us. But they've green-lighted, Commissioner, that we could get to their basin over here through an easement. And the water's all heading to Jackson Park already, it's fairly low slope, though, it doesn't look like a normal basin when you get back there.
Where does it go once it gets there, Stephen? Just city?
That's a city engineering question, that's a good question. If you went back to Jackson, that's the walking trail. When I went back there, it doesn't feel like I'm in a basin, but it's a fairly big area that you can see the, there's the walking trail, you can see that's the detention basin. And I don't think there's an inlet, I didn't, but it's a big, big kind of low area that holds all that water, and I guess it just sort of moves naturally as water does, up and down. So that's the plan, and I appreciate what Kendall did, that's a fairly cheap model, and if you read those pages, that's some detailed stuff we got. But this is what we needed to move forward. So at this point on the agenda, again, I would ask that you guys give me authority to pay this first bill and reduce the cash bond by 2,500, and let me move forward with the bid document and bring it to you later.
Make that motion.
Jeff, make the motion, we approve. Vince, seconds. Question, discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor? Vote unanimous. Right, I'm Mel, subdivision approvals, John Helm, subdivision plat, 321 Hayes Lane.
Mr. Chairman, I might suggest, all these plats went through technical review, were all viewed, met the requirements. There was, the Helm plat at your seat was new today. And I didn't put all the plats on the screen, so, just in Argyle Woods for a reason, and that's different. We could review those and approve those in one big lump sum, or we could do them one by one, wherever you all prefer. But all of the plats went through technical review, we're giving preliminary approval, and you either have the red line version or you have the revised Helm plat at your seat. We could take them one by one, or again, we can do them as a group. It's whatever your all's pleasure is.
Speaking of as a group, we can just talk about all of them once again.
That's okay, Chairman. It's what everyone do.
I don't care. I don't care.
You guys want to walk through them? All right, let's go through them. The first one's the Helm plat, pretty straightforward here, it's a zone GRA. It's actually a 3.009 track, it's being reduced to 2.759. That little small remainder's being added to the track to the north, which gives it a new number of 28, 841. So again, you see a nice, clean square track, it's now Track 4B, 2.759 acres, and we're moving just a quarter of an acre up to the parent track, again, put it over 28. Technical review reviewed this, gave it preliminary approval with a recommendation for the planning commission to approve, the Helm plat. I'll walk on to the second one, which is the Overstreet Daily Property, and you guys tell me if you guys, am I out of order with your packet? This one looks a little weird on the drawing, a lot of floodplain, an odd kind of easement, and you see that red triangle box. What we're doing is creating a 1.110 acre track off Miners Branch Road. This is coming off the two tracks, you got to turn that drawing kind of north and south. And you can see we're creating a little track along Miners Branch on the left, it's getting added to the track on the right, which is coming off the big track on the other side of the creek. So we're creating that red box, which will be 1.11 acre with a barn. There's an easement that you see is plotted all the way across because it's the only way we can get to the property. However, the property's frontage jumps across the creek and touches Miners Branch Road, but there's no physical way to access the property there. So we're creating the red box, and you can see the dotted line, AG put on there, that's all floodplain. And there's already a barn there, and it's being conveyed for someone that's probably going to use it for recreation, hunting, just whatever. There's no way a building could be built out there or a house because of the floodplain. I'd be glad to answer any questions on that one. Next plat is John and Janet Almiller, and we're dividing this into three tracks, a seven-plus acre, a 65-plus acre, and a 19-plus acre. Technical review looked at this plat, again, it met all the requirements of subregs. It's a little odd how the plat looks, again, you got to look at your purpose statement, and as you can kind of see, we've created two tracks, kind of on the west side of the road, on the east side of the road, I'm sorry. You see tracks D and track C, and then, but track B is on the west side of the road up to the north side. So again, three tracks have been created, reconfigured, 19-acre, 65-plus acre, and a seven-acre track. And you guys had the red line version, that's what we're doing now, as we go through technical review, if there's any items to correct, we're showing you guys those corrected items, giving it preliminary approval. With these conditions being met, you guys approve it, the surveyor still has to make these corrections and turn them in to us. I'd be glad to answer any questions on that plat. Next one is the Shellburne Property. You can see that off Faulkner Lane, not too much there, again, creating, this one's confusing because we're combining to resplit, we cut out a track A and B off two different tracks to create a new track two, and create a new track one and a track three. So again, all of those are kind of spelled out, kind of go around the horn from 12 o'clock. Track one is up there at the top, 52-plus acres. Come on down south, you can see we had to create A and B to now, and that all becomes track two. So B is shown there at about 3:00 on your drawing, as we move on down to about 5:00, you see track A. Those are then combined, and that whole bottom left of your plat becomes track two. And you see the number there, that makes it 53.638 acres. Kind of roll on around about 7, 8:00, if we're going kind of clockwise, and you see the track three, which is 31.651 acres. And so we end up with three tracks, all meets the requirements as a subregs. Glad to answer any questions about that one. This is the last plat, and it's up on the screen for a reason, no big deal. This is a condo plat, this one was revised at your seat, you should have the revised plat, should have been one you picked up today when you came in initially. Mr. Carver and the owner are proposing to make a condominium development here off Argyle Woods Drive. The first plat we got didn't really meet the definition of what a condo plat is under Charis 381, the horizontal property statute, because there was no common area shown on the original plat. So this plat's been revised to show you now common area, show you the six condo lots, the cross-access easements, how we're going to access the property to the southern side. And again, pretty much a straightforward condo plat, and then later on, you'll see a revised site plan that creates the actual condo lots, buildings, garages, driveways, et cetera. First plat, we saw it technical review, though, we had, we struggled with because we weren't sure if those were townhome lots or condo lots. And with the absence of common space, we didn't feel they were condos. The goal was to make this a condominium plat, and that's what you have in front of you. So those are all the plats, kind of real fast there, and I'd be glad to answer any questions about any of those plat proposals, the surveyors, I believe, are in the room. There's Dale and Kendall, and if you guys have any questions, they'd be glad to jump up here and answer any on those plats. But again, we can approve them one by one, or you guys could do a motion to approve all the plats that were reviewed by the technical review committee in preliminary fashion, and you guys are giving them final approval, condition on getting the corrections, signatures, and on and on.
I'll make the motion that we approve all five subdivision plats here contingent on getting the necessary signatures and corrections made.
I'll second.
Terry makes a motion, we approve. Susie, seconds. Question to motion? Hearing none, all in favor? Vote unanimous. Item G, old business, party on Eric, extreme inflatables.
Mr. Chairman, if it's okay, there's a lady in the audience here that is in a tight time constraint here, and we have two items at the end of the agenda under public hearings that are the historic properties that we need to review. Is there any chance the commission would consider a kind of jumping the agenda around and maybe consider those two historic properties so she can keep her next appointment? Or I'm comfortable, we could handle them if she left, but she's concerned that she'd like to be here.
That's fine, we can do that.
They would be the two historic properties at the end of the agenda, or the end of your packet. There are two properties that have been requested to come into the historic district in the city of Danville, the Montgomery Rhodes House and the Willis Russell Memorial House, and we could go through those fairly quickly if you guys are okay with that change.
All right, so we're going to go to item H, Danville, number four and five, the Danville Architectural Heritage Review Board.
That is correct, and I'll go through those.
And this has to do with the Montgomery Rhodes House at 305 North Third Street.
Yep. So there's a zoning map up on the wall, and you can see that there's the Third Street property. We are not changing the zoning. The yellow lines you see to the south is the north side of the historic district. So this property is not physically in the district or contiguous, but the ordinance allows us to put single properties into the historic overlay, which is our HPO district. And this property, obviously, everyone knows this property, a very historic home in our community. The property owner has requested that this property be brought into the district as a local historic property, which means it would be regulated under the design guidelines, you'd have to get COAs to make improvements. And again, the property's own, general, large lot residential, it would stay residential, you would just now have this historic overlay designation. This feels like a zone change, we had to process it like one because we are amending the historic overlay layer. If you guys make a recommendation to approve this property coming into the district, we forward that to the city, just like a zone change, and they have to ratify it. And again, this property, a narrative that you see was not written by me, it was written by Joni House, the city's historic preservation staff. The AHB board has reviewed this formally and made a recommendation to you guys to bring this property in, and you'd be making a recommendation to the city to amend the overlay. They had a formal meeting and reviewed this in a more historic context than we typically do. This is very similar to us looking at the guidelines. And a funny side story, you guys know the history of this house and the movie that was there. I had a call when a sign went up and someone said, "Hey, what are they going to do with that house? Hope they're not going to change it to commercial or do something." And I said, "Well, we're bringing it into the historic district." And the lady said, "You know they filmed Gone with the Wind there." And I said, "Well, I'm pretty sure they didn't, but I'm not going to fight with you about it." She said, "No, they filmed Gone with the Wind there." And I said, "Well, I appreciate that, and I'll mention that fact." She let me know she didn't live in our county, she was just driving on through. So I don't know if you knew that, Gone with the Wind was filmed there. Two famous movies now. I know. So anyhow, you guys know it's an important structure, the whole reason the property owners want to bring it in is to preserve the structure, keep the integrity long into our future. So again, our, the staff's recommendation is that you guys would make a recommendation to the city.
So move.
Jeff, moves, we approve.
I'll second.
Susie, seconds. Question, discussion on the motion to approve. Hearing none, all in favor? Vote unanimous.
All right, this next one's very interesting, you guys know this on Walnut Street, there's Constitutional Square, kind of over there, cat a corner to the property. This one looks like it's in the district, but it's not, so there's Constitutional Square. This property actually had two structures on it at one time, and one is gone. This property actually sits just over the line, the historic boundary line isn't accurate on that map, so when we looked at it, we realized it was not in the historic district. There's the, there's the structure, and you guys know this structure well, too. And the Boyle Landmark Trust owns this structure and is very interested in preserving the integrity of this structure long into the future. They also are looking at potentially selling this or trying to get a use to go into the structure. And so we're going to be meeting next week about some options that let them do some things to make sure the structure stays intact. That's the property, we'd be bringing that property into the historic district, which is 204 East Walnut Street. And I'll let you speak if you want to on something, or...
I don't need to speak if you have questions.
Very similar application. Go ahead.
I'm Barbara Hewlett, here to represent the Boyle Landmark Trust. And the architectural history of the cabin is 1790s. It's very significant to Constitution Square and the whole area, which was originally settled as early Danville, what we consider an early townhouse that was built in Danville in the 1790s. White oak logs. We've wrestled with the thing for empty years, had, Boyle Landmark Trust has had it since 1984. And it has had several mini restorations, lots of things have been done to continue to keep it where it is, on its original site, even though it's three inches from the house next door. You could reach out and hand some butter across to butter the toast if you wanted to. But we're trying to get it ready, have it put into the historic district and historic overlay because that's an added protection for the history of the cabin forever, and the city of Danville and the people will always have that representative there, it's early Danville settlement. And it's by itself, there's no other comp around that is of that quality that's still standing, that's still here. So we respectfully request that you accept it as the AHB accepted it into the historic overlay. We're in a procedure going through, and then it goes on to the city. Thank you for considering. I have to pick up my daughter Libby at a job, so that's the reason. Thank you for allowing me to go ahead of time. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
I'll make the motion that we accept.
Terry Moos, we accept.
Second.
Then second. Questions, discussion on the, discussion on the motion to approve? Hearing not all in favor? Motion unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
I might have saw that up off my.
Alrighty.
Okay. Back to old business party on air, extreme inflatables, item G.
Yeah, Joe and Ashley Wesley are, are with us today, as well as Dale from AGE. You guys remember, we approved this site plan last month. There was a little, some neighbors showed up about some landscape issues along the western edge of that property. We asked that they come back with some kind of landscape concept. We did approve the site plan, the building's under construction, but we wanted as a courtesy review to get a look at it. It's not a formal landscape plan, just what was the idea. They went the extra mile, met with the neighbors. We got some different opinions on what folks wanted. So again, this is the aerial that you see where we're going to build the building. This was the original plan, as you guys know, when it was going to be apartments. It was zoned, and, and there's the commercial zoning that was done in 2017. And then this was the original plan, it was the concept plan, it was brought in with the 2017 zoning. And as you guys remember, last month, the plan was to move the building to the south, make it more function of the compound that they already have. Less building this way, no parking, drainage, but a fairly complicated retaining wall that's running in this direction that, that's pretty steep. And the neighbors in this property had some trees they wanted to preserve, they wanted a co, a combination of trees and chain link. The next neighbor, we have the retaining wall, has some plank fence. The next neighbor has some plank fence, and then we have a heavy tree line this way. So really, they went door to door, and how, how can we do something across the whole property? Deal with the retaining wall, fence where we need to fence, and plant some trees to supplement what's already there. So this is what we got. It's pretty crude, and I get, I get to take credit for that. We worked on that as a group, and she's got some photos here. But the plan is to leave the tree line and put the chain link fence here. The blue is we just sort of leave, the plank fence is already there. The retaining wall starts to come on downhill to about the three-foot mark or, or lower. We plant trees where we no longer have trees or fence, and we have a heavy white pine buffer in this area, and we supplement this area with trees of a pine nature to give some coverage from one end to the other, either fence, trees, or combination. So we, we're saying that is the landscape plan, and Ashley or Joe may want to come up here and tell you what they plan to do. And this project got expensive with that retaining wall and got a little more complicated than we all anticipated, but the plan is just to build a 12,000-square-foot building to accommodate the existing facility. And you can see the drainage and all, all of that. The plan is to bring all the water back to this point. I'm glad to answer any questions. I'm not sure, we need a formal vote on that. We approved their site plan, conditioned on seeing the landscape plan. And you guys, you're welcome to comment if you want to, or say anything Ashley or Joe you guys want to say or mention, or? I don't, unless you guys have any questions, or?
I don't really have a ton of questions.
Just after all, the retaining wall.
That's not being like, it's not like a.
That's already here.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we've already completed the fact, or?
The only question I have, all the neighbors, okay, you think there are?
Yeah, I think so. The biggest concern was a neighbor directly behind us, and she's got really good tree cover, but her concern was her trees. And, and then the fence line, hurt, behind her property is also the steepest area of the retaining wall. So that's where we'll be adding the chain link, chain link fence to, to offer that protection.
But the trees are planted like right on our property line. So, most fences are built on a property line. And that's weird, and acting on all of our properties.
We're good then, no, we don't need a motion, Stephen?
I don't think so.
Henry, any thoughts on that?
No, based on the motion made at the last meeting, it doesn't appear that we do. They've complied with the condition, presented their plan, we're good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're, we're going to add that into the zone, zoning permit file and staple that on, and I'll be, we'll double check as we go out and do our inspections. Hey, thank you, guys. See you.
Item H, public hearings. Planning and zoning has filed application to rezone 154 parcels in downtown Perriville, 191.879 acres. Stephen, you'll speak to that, please?
Yes, sir. This is an odd project, possibly one that maybe the planning commission hasn't seen in a while. And I'm starting with the future land use map, and I'll explain that, but I want to talk about the project. The planning commission is the applicant, because we initiated through a joint effort with the city of Perriville, what we'll call a cleanup zoning project, or a zoning conversion project. There was a committee, myself, one of the commissioners, actually three commissioners, the mayor, and Vicky Good at Main Street Perriville. And we went block by block, and what we started with, as you guys remember, was a future land use map. So we looked at the future, and we drafted a new future land use map that you guys passed back in April. And it's interesting, because the future land use map was the basis on how we made some of these zoning conversions, and I'll show you that in a minute. But this is the fut, the adopted future land use map, which doesn't mean much, as you guys know, until there's a formal zone change, but this is a formal zone change. And I'll, and I'll show you why we comply with that future land use map. We didn't make any changes on the map that aren't consistent with that future land use map, number one, and we cleaned up a whole lot of properties. As the chairman just mentioned, there was over 150 parcels that we identified, and I want to kind of go over some ground rules that we set for ourselves. There was obviously a lot of properties, and this isn't going to show well, this is the existing zoning map for Perriville. But before I do that, I'm going to move on forward, and it jumps into the next gentleman's project, but I want to show you, that's what the zoning map today looks like before we made it a color zoning map. That's the paper map that goes all the way back in the past, that eventually is labeled. So when you have to look up zoning, you sort of got to know where the lines are and know what the zoning means. DT, GRA, NCC, there's the river. And in that, it was a paper map with no real explanation of where you're at and what the zonings mean. So as you know, we converted the map to a color map. So that's the map today, that's the 2007 Perriville zoning map. And as the committee went block by block, it became so apparent, several problems on this map. So our ground rules were, as we move forward with a big project like this, is we're going to fix the properties that have multiple zonings on one piece of property. And let me tell you why that's an issue. You look at this part of this neighborhood here on Leonard, and you see a neighborhood, small lots, quarter acre, even smaller, and some of them are zoned agriculture. We've got lots that are split zoned up here, front yards are residential, backyards are agriculture. We got that problem down Beale Street. We got the schools zoned residential, we got, we got multifamily on top of commercial buildings. We got a whole neighborhood, again, zoned agriculture in the back. We got agricultural properties that were zoned residential that are clearly farms, again, split zones. So we wanted to correct all the problems that exist where someone has residential or commercial, and that, that's not what it is. The reason why that's an issue, in the modern financial times and mortgage financing, we do what's called zoning compliance letters. In banks, when they're doing their title search, or you refinance your house, or you buy a home, they check zoning. And when you have one of these split zoned issues, or you've got floodplain on your property, or your front yard's zoned commercial and it's a house, that's a problem for the bank. And we very regularly write a letter from a bank on a re-mortgage that says, "The property's non-conforming. The property is a residence, however, it's got commercial zoning. Or it's got a floodplain on it, sits in a floodplain." The goal was to fix all the problems we could fix in one big swoop, and it was pretty painstaking because we, again, it's 150 properties. The second part was the downtown. Could we label the downtown something that's downtown? I mean, clearly, there's a downtown Perriville. There's a perception that maybe it's just one road, but the general consensus, think about Danville's, where's the downtown? What should it be labeled? One problem we identified is Merchant's Road. Clearly, there's buildings there. Commercial buildings, they're zoned single family. The Catholic Church across the street, zoned single family. City Hall, zoned single family. Just a mess, man. It's just, what, what, what do you do? How do you approach it? Well, the committee's opinion was, let's go door to door. Let's ask people to participate in this project, and if they don't want us to convert their property, we won't convert it. So it's taken us several months. We started this way back after the winter. The goal was to have this to you guys in May, didn't make it. We started getting signatures, and of the 150-some properties, we got over 129 signatures. People who signed on and said, "Count me in, I want this." We got about a dozen people that said, "Leave me alone," and we converted the map. So the map that even went out in your packet has been revised again, and that's the map you should have grabbed right here when you came in, because there were four more people that said, "I want you to leave me alone." So we're opting them out. When the planning commission staff initiates a zone change as we can, as opposed to an applicant, we have different notice requirements, and we met all those notice requirements. This was a, a document that we worked with the Bluegrass ad. This was called a metadata sheet. And what we did is, after the committee identified the parcels that needed change, we were able to go in there in GIS and just click, 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 and create a spreadsheet. It was real simple, takes five minutes to literally create an Excel spreadsheet for 150 property owners, so we knew who the names were and who to mail, because we have to mail letters. We also used that, then we made a signature line, and what's called a witness line, and we started to hit the ground, and we got signatures. But that was basically the original parent track of the 150-some parcels that we're going to fix. And it shows you, you take those big farms out on the north, and it's a big chunk of the city that was just mis-zoned. And again, you can see it all over the city. I mean, the school, things that match parcel lines, just over and over, just all the way around the horn, you can kind of see problems. And interestingly enough, some folks said, "Leave me agriculture," and we did that. So, and I'll hit this in just a second. I'm going to jump back to my staff report and hit some technical things in there real quick, and I'll tell you kind of how we did our letters and, and how we got people to buy in on this. So going back to the staff report on page one, I just want to formally put in the record that the applicant is a Danville Boyle County Planning and Zoning Commission. Property size, as you heard, was approximately 191.879 acres. I explained to you kind of all the kind of why, how we went about this. I think it's interesting to note that the future land use map, again, was revised in April of 14, or 18, and everything that's being proposed is consistent with this future land use map to a T. Our application review was under the conference of plan review that's required by the statute. And as you know, in our zoning ordinance, Article 1810 says, when we do a zone change for a normal customer, that a concept plan's supposed to come in. Well, obviously, in this case, it's virtually impossible to do a concept plan for the whole community for existing stuff, so the staff did not submit a concept plan, nor would it be possible on a mass cleanup zoning conversion project like that. Under the conference of plan review on page three, I think it's important, again, to show that we were in compliance with conference of plan directives. In chapter one of the conference of plan, it says, "The following statement of goals and objectives intended to provide direct guidance for the implementation of decisions by the planning commission and legis, local government advisors related for future physical development." And it gives you clear guidance on how you guys approve zone changes, including the general land development goal, that one of the objectives is to assure the best possible utilization of land by promoting planned development and uses. The land use goal talks about respect the character of existing neighborhoods by encouraging new development and redevelopment that conforms to the existing content, which is exactly what this cleanup project's goals were. And in the course of chapter nine, it tells us how we use our future land use map, how it's the basis for zone change approvals. And at the bottom of page three, it says applicants for zone changes, which in this case is us, that we have to follow the future land use map as the basis. So there could be a lot of why we should do it, why we shouldn't do this project. But at the end of the day, is this conversion project consistent with that future land use map? And I would suggest to you, it does comply with that, and the directives in the conference of plans, as well as KRS 100. And again, the findings are outlined on page five, I won't get into that. You guys know how you guys approve zone changes, you've done them for dozens of years, long, long before I've been here, under KRS 10231. And then again, at, at the end of this thing, and I'll sort of wrap up and, and point some things in the new map, we got over almost 130 signatures that literally authorized this project, but a dozen or so asked to be revised. So at your seat, you have the new map. There were eight parcels changed from when out in your packet. Another four requests came in to me yesterday, although they maybe have changed their mind to go back the other direction, and I'll ask them that in just a question. So there were four requests for 209 East Third, 215 South Bragg, 217 South Bragg, 216 South Bragg, that they stay residential. And I'm fine with making that notation on this map, because if we formally adopt this, I got to know exactly what the map was that we passed, so it's going to end up having to be a marked up version of the latest draft. And so going back to what we did, initially, when we had the 150 parcels, the game plan was, we'd go out and get signatures, and the planning commission would handle all the out-of-town folks. So I drafted the letter in April, you can see way on back, I think it says 16, I can't see very well from here. But we drafted the letter saying, here's what we're doing, we're converting things, we're fixing your property. I asked for them to sign and witness, and I handled the out-of-town folks. The, the city commissioners went around, city council members, and, and Vicky Good went out and got physical signatures on that spreadsheet. And at some point, we turned it in, it was kind of a fisher-cut bait approach, we got to cut this off at some point. We took it in, and we realized we had 129 signatures to go forward. Our attorney advised us, we still have to mail 150 letters out in, in advance of this hearing regardless, under the statute. So even though we had their signature, and we were kind of co-applicants, we sent 152 more letters out there in August to everyone, and said, "Call us if you have a problem." And that generated those eight parcels being revised. So we think it's pretty good, and there may be some folks in opposition of this, but the goal was, if we don't want, if you don't want in, we'll take you out, and, and we'll take you out today. However, there were 140-some people that said, "I'm fine with my property being fixed, and, and I appreciate the effort, and count me in." There's going to be some questions, and before I do that, I just want to point out the new map, because that's what's lacked the whole time here. There's the proposed map now, and I'll just show you some cleanup stuff. We had residential on the Battlefield property, it's gone. This gentleman right here called me last week, said, "Take me back residential." His daughter wanted hers back residential. This lady right here said, "Take me back residential." This gentleman over on the bottom, and my pointer's going to quit, he said, "I want my backyard to stay agriculture." So his property is front yard residential, backyard agriculture. Gentleman over on this side, same thing, on the western side of that circle, said the same thing, "Leave me agriculture," and you can see that, and the pointer's going to quit. There are several parcels that we took back, the dozen are reflected on that map. There are four more that were requested yesterday. Again, those are the three on South Bragg and one on East Third. The SAPS are here, their property, they wrote me a letter or notes, said, "Please keep me residential." However, when we went back and checked, their property is actually, and again, this is just part of the map, their property is actually downtown already. So they have two parcels, one of which was already downtown, the next one was residential. So I'm fine with keeping them the same, but if your intention is to make them both residential, we'll do that, and if your intention is to make them both DT, we'll go that route, whatever you prefer. So you want to leave them to DT? Okay. Well, then, then that, those aren't a change on the map then. If that's what they're saying, then this map is accurate at this point to reflect their, their, their request. And then there's going to be questions about this, but that's my whole staff report, and I'll say something at the end. You guys may have questions of me of the process. That is the proposed map, plus the three properties, or the two additional properties, one on East Third and one on South Bragg, and, and we'll spell those out in more detail at the end. And again, you guys may have questions for me, there may be folks in the audience who want to comment or ask me questions.
Questions from the commission to Stephen with regard to this? This being a public hearing, we give the audience certainly an opportunity to express their opinions, so if there's anyone who'd like to speak in favor of this, please come to Mike and introduce yourself, name, address, and more than welcome to do so.
Sorry, I was nothing to speak.
We'll get to the ones that are not in a moment. Yeah. Anyone who wants to speak in favor of a proposed zone change, come to Mike, give your name and address, please.
My name's Henry Lutes, and I've, I've been around Perriville all my life, and I bought the old Sonic Lodge.
Mr. Moos, just give us your address for the record, please.
Oh, it's, uh, I'm 168 Kendall Hayes Road. I live in the country out there, but I own that lodge building, and it's never been anything but a commercial building. I pay a commercial rate on the gas, electric, and everything, and that's the reason I signed to get in this, because it's been missed, you know, it's been in a residential zone, and I would like to get it put in the right manner. That's, that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak in favor of the proposed zone change? Hearing none, anyone like to speak in opposition of the proposed zone change? Come to Mike, please, introduce yourself and your address, please.
My name is Stephen Walker, I live at 205 East Fourth Street, Perriville. I'd just like to have my property zoned residential. I regret that I should have notified you earlier, but I have concerns about the broader implications of this. I would particularly like to speak about item H3 to do with the crematorium, because I think both...
We'll get to that in a moment, sir.
Yes, but I think the two are related, therefore, the one has the implication for the other. So that's where my concerns will come out about...
Okay, well, that's another item on the agenda.
Thank you.
Stephen, you make that note, please.
So let me make sure I get that address right. Sir, could you give me your address again? What's your address again?
205 East Fourth.
East Fourth Street. All righty, thank you.
Okay.
You want yours to stay?
Probably already changed on.
Okay. Well, you want to get up? You need to, you need to get on the mic here, if you don't, you don't want to.
Yeah, I just want things to work out, but there are some of us that are...
Excuse me, introduce yourself, please.
My name is Sylvia Bauer, I live at 402 South Bragg Street. It's Bragg and Fourth in Perriville. And there might be a lot of people like me who moved to Perriville because it was small, charming, and everybody got along, everyone gets along, and we just have a lovely community. I love to walk all over town. I start early in the morning walking. Anyway, I'm more concerned about the zoning all around the historic area than I am my house. You know, residential, I'll go back to residential, and I wish that a lot of the other places would stay residential, if they're not gonna do something like a little B&amp;B, or, you know. But I'm very concerned about something that verges on industrial right in the middle of our neighborhood, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
And I'll just comment on that real quick. That's been a concern that's been raised, is what does the downtown zoning allow or disallow? There won't be any industrial uses in downtown zoning. The downtown zoning is, as we know, at the best examples, think about our downtown here. Coffee shops, offices, residences, apartments, fire stations, city halls, you know, attorney's offices, a lot of things can happen in downtown, but what you don't get with the downtown is you don't get formal parking lots, it's hunt-and-peck parking. You get mixed uses, and that was the intention, was to label the downtown area something conducive to downtown Perriville. There are businesses there, there are residences there, and it's a valid point on one hand, because where we clearly have a residential block, maybe we should've just left it GRA. But some of that wasn't GRA, as we just showed you, some of it was DT already. We've got churches that should've been DT, they don't really fit single-family residential. Merchant's Row, obviously, everyone would probably agree, that should be, that should be commercial. But this was really a project where we talked to people, said, "What do you prefer yours to be?" And if you had multiple zonings, we weren't just gonna give you commercial, because your desire was, "I want a commercial piece of property on my house." But the downtown, which ended up being a block coming down Buell, Jackson, but we went two blocks this way, and maybe that's too much to go this block. But clearly, this block that kind of comes off the main street, comes down to Fifth and fronts the river, is a prime candidate for the downtown district. It's a flex district, and that is true, but you can't do big retail, you can't do industrial, you can't do drive-throughs. It's fairly limited in scope of a neighborhood style. Now, maybe the term's wrong, because we call our downtown downtown, and what's the downtown? Other communities call it central business or neighborhood business, but the goal is not to have commercial populate that whole area. The goal is to allow flexible uses, so if someone wanted to do a bed and breakfast, or be a CPA and live there, you know, that's what you can't do now. If you have a single-family zone, and you're an accountant, or you're a contractor, guess what? You're running an illegal business probably off the property. We want things to be flexible, we want Perriville to grow and have good uses, and the downtown zoning is what traditionally you put in your downtown areas. Everything exists, whether it be schools, and colleges, and coffee shops, and businesses. But we didn't see a big problem, and most of the people we talked to, again, the majority of the people were fine with that. The approach was, if you don't want yours downtown, we'll take it out. But it's a valid point, is her concern is, "What could my neighbors end up doing?" And it's a valid issue. But, but it's a community approach. The other gentleman mentioned that this was done, and these two are related, and I'm gonna take offense to that, not offense, I'm gonna take objection to that, because that was raised to me, I was on the phone to 10 o'clock last night, there's a lot of folks here about this next case. And there was a clear accusation leveled, I guess at me, that somehow these are connected, that this whole project that we worked on since Christmas was simply so the crematorium could come in and not have to do their own zone change, or the liquor store that potentially is going in, that we did this project for two clients. All this work, all this door-to-door, all this meeting with the neighbors, dozens of hours meeting with the committee, that somehow, we did this so this would just sort of pave the path for this other project to roll in on that street. That is absolutely untrue, I'll argue with anyone about that. We'll, we'll get into this, because I can tell you, that committee never discussed that, I never discussed it. It literally on the phone was, well, there was a handshake deal that you guys and me worked this out. It's ridiculous. And I'll, and I'll argue about that, and if anyone wants to get up and say, "These two are related," the only way they're related is, yes, we are converting the downtown to DT, and that has, that allows some other things to happen, and there is an application before you separate for a project that is taking advantage of the zoning in this blanket fashion. It was not thought out. Same with the liquor store, I didn't meet with them and say, "Hey, we'll do this, and you'll be good to go, and don't worry about having to file a zone change." There's another one or two that was mentioned, that somehow this was a grand plan, that's just, that's just absurd, and we'll argue about that, because these are hundreds of parcels, and again, 140 people that support this, a dozen have said, "Leave me alone," and we said, "We'll take you out." And so, it's a lot of work that went into this, and to confuse these two is simply the coincidence that they landed on the agenda the same day, and we'll just deal with that in the next case, but this, this case is, is a lot of work with a lot of folks, and, and we hope you support it. Yes, sir.
Jim?
How many people were on that original committee with the city of Perriville and the Main Street?
Five, I believe it's five. It was three commissioners, the mayor, myself, and Vicky Goode. As we just scoped the future land use map, then the commissioner had resigned, so he sort of dropped off, and it came down to three of us, five of us, at some point in time, although we had the, we had some other folks kind of participate to help us understand what was what in the property. We had some discussion about where the city limits was south, so we had to, you know, work with the PVA. We talked with the fire official, I think, at one time, helped us out, or the police chief, I forget. And we just went parcel by parcel. We spent more time identifying those kind of splits than really the downtown. We just sort of said, "Let's make the downtown downtown. Where do we box it off?" We spent a whole bunch of discussion, do we stop at Fifth, do we stop at Fourth? And we did decide, do we go this second block, or would we stop right here? The problem we had is there's actually businesses on both sides of the road as we come down Bragg. So, do you split the blocks? Do you go the full block? You know, looking at this now, from this view, maybe we should've split the block if the parcels were conducive to do that, and just made the Bragg Street side. But I think at the end of the day, we just said, "Let's make it downtown, it doesn't infringe on anybody's ability to still reside there, because it's still legal." And it fits. So nobody has, we're not changing anyone's zoning to some degree, because if you're living there, you can still live there, if you have an apartment. That's the other thing. There's a lot of apartments and kind of second structures, all of those technically don't fit in the GRA either. So we have uses that, we're cleaning up a lot of things at one time, and, but we didn't zero in. Now, the gentleman with the lodge, I mean, he's tough, man, he actually has a lawyer call me first, and, and say, "Hey, guess what we're doing here?" But we missed it. We didn't, I didn't realize that was a lodge, I didn't realize that had been a commercial business that many years. So we labeled that one downtown. We did not give him highway commercial. We did not open up highway commercial anywhere on this map. In fact, the Dollar Store that was zoned highway commercial is going back to downtown. Why? Just because we're not gonna open up any highway commercial, because there's more things you can do with. The goal was not to put McDonald's and Hardee's in big parking lots, the goal was to allow adaptive reuse of historic structures in downtown Perriville. So, yes, sir?
Yeah. First of all, I'd like to thank all of the people in Perriville here, and Steve, and all the, all the people that work here at Planning and Zoning, besides the other commissioners, because I know what a major project this has been, and I, and I don't know, this is the first I'm hearing of any collusion, is that what you're calling it?
That's interesting. It may be.
Yeah. You know, but this is the first I've heard of anything like that, so I can attest to the fact that this is the first I've heard of it, so, but I'm interested in finding out about it. But, but I think that the, you can see that there's a lot of work that's been done for the good here by the people that are serious. I've been to Perriville for some other reasons, trying to help with the restoration of some of the buildings there with my wife, and there's a lot of good things happening there, and I think all of this activity has, first of all, was a tremendous amount of work. I can't imagine getting all those signatures and trying to get all those things to come together, and that's a great thing. But I think with all of those things, you're gonna find a few things that maybe don't line up quite as well, because it can never be perfect. And I go this far is an amazing feat, and thanks to all of you, both in Perriville and Stephen and his group.
Well, I want to let the other folks speak that are opposed, but, but I'll just end, and I'll, I'll say something at the end, but I think we're gonna obviously have a serious debate here in a few minutes on another issue, and that's fair, we want to have a fair hearing, and I think there's some valid points on all sides of this next case. But the zoning is in the center of that, because the DT zoning opens up that opportunity, although there's a non-conforming caveat there that would allow this other project to go forward without a zone change, and we'll spell that out later. And I think everyone needs to get up and spend serious, there's a lot of serious issues that were raised to me on both sides of this next project that need to be talked about. But when it gets to this, I don't see them any more related than we're converting this map, and one of those properties falls within that purple boundary that happens to be on the agenda today. But there was no collusion or discussion of that. So we'll, we'll jump it out to, and again, anyone else wants to...
Anyone else like to speak in opposition to this proposed zone change? Come to the mic, please, if you want to speak. Name and address, please.
Chrissy Sap, and we own the apartment house adjacent to the funeral home in Perriville.
Give us your address, please.
217 South Bragg Street.
Thank you.
Okay, the only thing that I can speak on the part of, whatever you said about the feud, is that people are saying that it takes a certain amount of people, commercial, in order to allow this next issue to come about.
We're not speaking about this next issue at this moment, okay? We're just doing with a zone change here. Stephen, the city commissioner of Perriville and the mayor, where's their stance on this?
Well, we got a commissioner here, but obviously, this is just a recommendation, it'd have to go to Perriville to be voted on in a formal ordinance, so, I mean, it becomes kind of their baby at that point, whether they go forward with it or not, but there is a commissioner here, if you want to hear from him, he was served on the committee.
It's up to him.
Hi, I'm Paul Webb, I live at 326 South Buell Street. So when we started this project, we were clearly just trying, our heart was that Perriville was small, and we wanted to keep that feel. So, before we even started looking deeply into the zoning, we, we wanted to make it clear that we want the small-town feel, we want to be able to preserve some of the history there, we didn't want to make people do anything they didn't want to do. So, when Steve was talking about, like you said, we, it took us, we started back in January, I believe, just getting some ideas, throwing things out, then we spent time looking at the future land use map, because we realized that was an issue, then we got to the zoning layer itself. And, so as we was going through there, one of, one of my questions were, is, was, was the fact that a lot of these lots in that DT area, that core DT area that we created, were very small, you couldn't really, you couldn't really do a huge commercial business. So that's where he explained to us what DT was. And when he's talking about getting signatures, I, my poor feet, I spent a whole week getting 130 signatures, and I made sure that when I went and talked to the residents, that I was able to truly explain what each different zoning was. And if I had a question, or if they had a question I could not answer, I got directly in touch with Steve. He explained it to me, so I can explain it to them, because I never wanted them to get any kind of misinformation. So, it was me, the mayor, Jerry Howe originally, and Brian Caldwell, and then as an ancillary person, Vicky Goode from Main Street Program. So we, that was the core people working on this, and, you know, we kept to the promise that this was an opt-in for citizens and not a forced thing. So as he says, we have 12 people who opted out now, out of 160, I think it was originally. So overall, the conception is a lot of people are for this, the zoning, not the next issue, but the zoning. So, and I, I feel like I can speak for the rest of us that helped with this commission, and from the city council, when we talked about this over the last few months, that there's a big support there too, so.
Steve? Thank you. Anyone else like to speak with opposition to this proposed zone change? Hearing none, we would declare the public hearing closed on this item, and decision's up to the commission for a vote.
Chairman, I want to make sure I get the properties into your motion.
Okay.
I'm gonna read them off and make sure everyone nods. The ones I've had that will stay the same, make sure, it's 216 South Bragg, so I don't know, Henry or Jenny want to write those down? So, we're approving this map with these changes, 216 South Bragg, 205 East Fourth Street, which was, yeah, that's on the list, 402 South Bragg Street, 314 East Third, 209 East Third, and 216 South, I said that. So there should be five properties that we're, we're leaving the same. I think I've got them all.
In your packet there, there is a motion to approve or a motion to deny written for us, and I think that makes the legal requirement, so if someone wants to make one of those motions, please do so.
I'll make the motion that we approved, the proposed zoning map amendment submitted by the applicants with the five changes, in exception of the five changes that Steve just outlined. And I'll do it based on the testimony documents presented in this public hearing.
Motion's been made to approve with those exceptions.
I'll second.
Susie seconds. Question, discussion on the motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, if I might just clarify. Commissioner Mannan, you're using the motion that's in the packet, which uses the justifications of conformity with the comp plan and rectifying inappropriate current zonings into appropriate re-zonings?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Henry. Any other questions? All in favor? Vote unanimously. Thank you. Next item on the agenda of the public hearing with regard to William McAnally, site plan amendment, 1020 Argyle Woods. I didn't know we had so much concern about this.
This one?
Whatever, I kept saying the next item, so...
Oh, next item, it's the next, next item, sorry about that. This one should go pretty quick, and it's a pretty neat case too, so let's do that real fast, that should be on the screen. Here we go. You guys saw the plat just a little bit ago for the condo, this is actually the condo, this is the site plan for those six condos. Again, I appreciate Mr. Carver, Kendall Wise there, they had to do some scrambling here at the last minute, as we all educated ourselves on KRS 381. Again, the first plat didn't show much common space, didn't really meet our definition of what a condominium development should be. As you know, just the simplest way to say that, in a condo, I own something, and then we own something. There has to be a master deed or condo regime, as well as subdeeds, which end up being those suites. So, Mr. Carver's proposing this site plan, which the condo lines are kind of here that you saw on the plat, so it'd be your building, your garage, your pad, your, your... So it'd be your building, your garage, your pad, your, your part of your driveway apron. Then the, the easement is on the south side, which is shared, and then there's common space all the way around. So this is the site plan. You see the structures are just habit over 1,400 square foot. They're one-story, shows landscaping, and again, and it's very important that we sort of mention this, and we'll get into this on both of these cases, that our zoning ordinance has three pages, and our attorney's walking back in the room, won't put him on the spot, but he's memorized all this. And 4.7 has very specific items what a site plan is. I think on both of these cases, there could be opposition or folks for, whether they like the condos or like the project. A site plan submittal is not about the use, it's about, it's a checklist approval that went through technical review on item, 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 being drainage and parking and landscape and setbacks. All those items are listed on that page of the zoning ordinance, as well as the standards for the site plan and the requirements you all have to approve a site plan. So all of that is, is, is what we're looking at on the next two cases, that site plans, you know, we can't get in here and say, look, we just don't like condos, or we don't like those buildings. This is about the technical requirements of, of, of site plan submittal. And unfortunately, a lot of that's about drainage and landscape setbacks and parking, which aren't great things, but that's what we have to look at. Everything on this site plan submittal for those condominium units meet the requirements of the Article IV of the zoning ordinance. Technical review looked at this, although that plan has been revised because of the condominium kind of confusion. It meets the requirements, and we'd recommend approval of that site plan application for those six, or those five units and the common space on Argyle Woods Drive. And I believe Kendall's here, and there may be some folks that have, oh, the applicants are back there in the back, too. I thought you were in opposition, didn't know. So they're in the back there for the project.
Again, this is.
Oh, you're the next door folks.
You're the neighbors.
Okay, good point, and I'm glad they just mentioned that. Had some calls from the, the group that's next door. There's actually was a phase one of this development done. Some of their concern is their, their condominiums were set up, but, and there's common space, but there wasn't really a master deed or condo association or HOA that was very clear to them on who owns the common space. There was a little bit of confusion on how these relate together. These are separate condo developments now. But some of the neighbors called, and their concern was, we want to make sure the next phase are truly condominiums. And their concern was, how is our association function? And we're trying to work through some of those technical issues with them on who owns what and how their association moves forward as a standalone units. And there's six units over there, I believe. And again, you guys are welcome to say anything if you need to, but they're the neighbors next door.
Again, this being a public hearing, anyone like to speak in favor of this site plan amendment? Everybody gets in a big hurry here. Anyone like to speak in favor, please go to the mic, please. Introduce yourself.
I'm Kendall Wise. Of course, I worked on the plans for the project, don't own the property, but helped Jeff Carver, who's going to build the homes, put together the plan for it. And when you hear the word condominium, a lot of times, you know, you, it's, it's not something that's as common in Danville as it is in a lot of other places, but as Steve alluded to, there are already some.
Raise that mic up.
There already are already on Argyle Woods, there are single-family homes, there are multifamily homes that are set up as condos. And so this is something similar to the character of the area that, that we're working in. And these homes are a little smaller than what's been built immediately adjacent to us, just to the north of us. And I think the original plan for development of the entire area was to have the homes that are in the area of this site that we're talking about, they were actually going to connect to the driveway to the north. But at some point after the first phase of the original condominium development was built, Bill McCanley, who owns the, the balance of the remaining property, he divided the property that was remaining into three tracts of land. And so one of those three tracts of land is, is the project that we're looking at today. And so after having been divided from the original development, of course, that opens up the opportunity to develop the property in, in a way that's different than what was originally planned. So even though it's not exactly like the original plan for the entire area, it matches the character and use. And so we don't feel like we've changed anything significant, and we feel like it fits very well. And Mr. Carver had recently built two, two homes off of Ben Ali Drive in Danville that are, are located in a very similar neighborhood. It's a, a neighborhood that has a private street condominium development, they're single-family homes with a one-car garage. And so he's seen that work in this community, that type of home, and he's recently completed the construction of those. So this is the, another project that he'll work on, and, and it'll be a very similar home to what he just built. And I'll be glad to answer any questions that, that might come up.
Thank you, Kendall.
All right.
Anyone else like to speak in favor? Hearing no one, anyone like to speak in opposition of this zone change request? Plant, site plan amendment, I'm sorry.
My name's Jim Johnson, and, excuse me, I live at 1030 Argyle Woods Drive, Unit 100. Excuse me. Our group, I, I won't speak for them explicitly, but I think I have their, the idea of what they want, and we sort of are, as a group, we don't have an association. The original plan for that was Mr. McCanley sold that to another person, I think it was his son. And it was supposed to be six units, which got built, and then there was supposed to be 15 more, and that was back during 2008. And if, when I understand from some neighbors and speaking with other people, is that that project ran into some financial problems. The bank took those units back, four of the six units. The association was originally required by the developer. For each of the six people would own a piece, or would join the association in order to buy it, it would be a part of their deed. This all got thrown into a mess, is my understanding. And some, a bank in Lawrenceburg actually wound up owning six of them, or four of the six. There were two individual owners. They sat empty for a long time. The four people that bought it from the bank signed, not an association, but a maintenance agreement. So when I bought, I own number one, 100, which is on the street, and it has the most land with it and trees and so forth. And my wife and I just mowed that, so we mowed everybody else's, too. And it's always been sort of a handshake situation that we've all got along. Now, that brings us up to now, when we found out that this was being redeveloped, excuse me, we were not aware that it had been changed to three separate lots. We were assuming, and I was given this plat when I bought from the, as, from a private owner, that it showed three more sections of townhouses slash condos, whatever you call them, to be built. Now, that's, personally, that's one of the things I took into consideration when I bought my property, was that it was very eye appealing, and there was going to be, if any development, there was going to be, all of them would be just like ours. So now, to bring up, we're not necessarily opposed to this situation. We've spoke with Mr. Carver, he seems to be a really nice guy. Is he here this morning? Okay. So you represent him? Okay, okay. Well, then I'll, I'll, I'll ask, I'll, I'll, may I ask questions of him?
Sure.
Okay. So Mr. Kendall, is it?
Kendall Wise.
Okay. Oh, Mr. Wise, okay, Kendall. So one of the things that we had discussed with Mr. Carver was that since he is building something different, and I'm assuming it's already been approved, so I don't know if we can back up with that or whatever, but he's building something different, they're obviously not going to look anything like ours. If you want to go, you, you talked about the ones over on Ben Ali. If anybody'd like to go over and look at them, you know, to me, I, I'm not going to tell you, anybody's baby is not pretty, but they're sure not to me. So I have a, a real concern there. But that can be mitigated, I think, and maybe with a fence all the way across that cuts them off. I had the lady tell me in plat nine, and that was what Bill originally built, the condos that have been down there since the 90s, I faced the back of her house, and she said when they started these that I live in now, that everybody in their condos that, to the back, was just horrified, because they used to look out at a beautiful field, now they've got a house right in the back of them. So the way that was taken care of was the developer agreed to put either a fence and/or trees as a barrier across. So that being the case, myself, and I think a couple or three more of our, my fellow owners have talked to Mr. Carver about that, and as of yesterday, I understand that he says that according to somebody, that can't be done. Can you speak to that? That we can't have a barrier across?
You could certainly have a barrier, a six-foot privacy wall. You could certainly have a fence. I mean, you could put a fence in a utility easement, but, you know, putting things in utility easement puts them at risk of getting torn out at some point. So anytime you put trees or, or bushes in a utility easement, especially when you have private utilities that are going to be using the utility easement as well, it really complicates things. Obviously, if they're public utilities, people feel like they can, I guess, allow a public utility to come in more easily than a private utility. But we're talking about private water services that would be using that, that easement as well. And it, it just gets really complicated if you start to ask, if you start putting bushes and trees in the utility easement. So this plan has, there's about 16 feet of space between the back of the homes and the property line that joins their, their development, and they're two separate developments at this point, not, not a shared homeowners' association or anything like that. And 15 feet of that 16 feet would be the utility easement for electric, water, and sewer. And then there'd be another approximately 12 feet of grass space on the other side of the property line that would be on their property, which would be a good space if they wanted to build a privacy fence or add some landscaping. They certainly could do that.
Okay, so my question on that is then, uniformity, if that has anything to do with when a new development comes in and things change, like the, the example I cited with my neighbor behind me, she was concerned that when you build in front of her place, she no longer has the same view and so forth, and that developer agreed to put those trees and fence across that as a barrier. So my question is, would Mr. Carver do that for us, even if it's on our property?
Okay. Kendall's here, and Mr. Carver's not here, and actually, the owner is not Mr. Carver at this point either, right? It's under option. And we'll ask our attorney. At this point, the planning commission can put conditions on site plans, we do them all the time. But unless, you know, you've got his power of attorney or something like that, I think Mr. Carver or Mr. McCanley are the only ones that can agree to that fence, and our attorney can address that. If you guys impose that as a condition, there'll be a privacy fence along that northern property line, I don't have a problem with it, the ordinance doesn't prohibit it. But to go to his question, is there a requirement that we do some separation for view sheds? No. When we have residential next to residential condos, townhomes, single stack, whichever way, there's no requirement with landscape, that, that would be offered by the developer. And again, he's right, this was one big project that was segmented with a plat that cut this into sellable lots, and now this is condo project number two, that's not really part of the bigger group. That fence is not an issue to me, but I think we need the property owner or somebody to stand here and say, I do on the fence. So I don't know what we do on that issue, but I could see that as a reasonable solution. It'd be nice if there were other things you wanted us to convey to the developer, that we could do that in a lump sum fashion. But if the fence is the main issue that your association's concerned about, I, I don't know how Kendall can actually agree to that, but I'll let Henry jump on that issue.
It's, it falls to Mr. Wise to speak to what authority he has to speak for Mr. Carver. And if this is something where the planning commission feels like this is necessary in their vetting of this site plan, and a necessary part of it, and, and Mr. Wise does not this morning have the authority to speak for Mr. Carver, we could pass it to the next meeting, we could approve it, condition to being able to obtain that. And if he's not, if we're not able to get a sign off from Mr. Carver, then that might be something where they'd have to come back before the commission again.
I think Steve answered the question that needed to be answered, which was that, you know, it's not really something that this commission needs to be concerned with. It's, you know, it's an issue between one homeowners' association and another. It's a like-kind use, I mean, the use of the properties are the same, and there's not really a requirement for a screen or a, a land use buffer because of different land uses. And to answer the question about Mr. Carver, I'm, because it's more of a private negotiation, I'm, I'm not going to get in the middle of saying what he can and will and won't do.
Anyone else like to speak against this item?
So Mr. Johnson, was that the only issue that your group has with this new?
Yes, or any other issue.
New development? Was just a buffer?
Carl?
My name's Carl Zekowski, 1030 Argyle Woods, and I'm in number 108. It, as Mr. Johnson alluded to, we currently do not have an association, homeowners' association, but we intend to establish one once we, it's clear who owns the common areas. So our, I guess there has been some discussion with Mr. Carver about an association for the, for the condos, and his, his opinion was, he was not going to establish one. And we think that's an issue. We'd like to get that resolved before it's approved.
I'll say, he is now. I mean, he'll have to now. The original plat did not show common, so the plan was to sell those lots independently, maybe form an HOA or condo regime. He will have to now with this revised plat, this revised site plan, there's now common space has to be owned by somebody. Now, the developer could own it well into the future, but he'll have to either own it as a developer or, and be the seventh owner or sixth owner in this case, but I think he'll have to form an association or HOA or something to maintain that. The big issue is that we're not connecting those two HOAs, and you guys are okay if he does his own. And again, just clarify, the zoning ordinance does not require a fence, but I'm good with whatever the planning commission does to mediate these issues between neighbors. And if there's a fence needed and the owners are okay with it, and that's what they want, we have no problem with the planning commission staff. You guys would impose that with the approval. It would help if someone was here that could agree to that, or, because maybe there's a different option. So maybe we need to table this till next month, or make the, again, the condition, approval conditioned on some design of fence, landscape look like we just did on this, the prior case earlier today.
I wouldn't want to put any requirements on someone who's not here to agree to them. I would be opposed to table them till next month, so that Mr. Carver could be here, represent himself, or he can work something out with the property owners, so that would be agreeable with everybody. Not, that's fine, too.
Can I say something?
Sure. Raise your mic up again, Kendall.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
The, the opposition's coming from a group of neighboring property owners, and, and they have space that they could do landscaping and build fences on their own property, rather than ask this developer to do it for them. And if you look at...
And if you look at, in a situation where a screening easement is required, the zoning ordinance says that even if you're, if you have two different uses, stockyards and a residential property, the development of the first property doesn't mean that that developer doesn't have to put in a screening easement. So, if you have a stockyards, a planned stockyards, and you have a planned residential community, and the residential community builds first, and they want a screening easement, that doesn't mean they're not required to put in the screening easement themselves. I mean, you can't put the burden on the other use all the time. So, you know, I just don't understand, you know, why we're, why when they have the space and they have four trees there already, why we're asking this developer to put in a fence.
I guess the only reason I say that is because I understood that he made some previous promise that he would, so, but I don't want to put words in his mouth if he's not here to agree or not agree.
Right. He's been out of town for a week, and he's been talking to these folks. I assume, you know, he's been trying to talk to them and make some compromise about what he's going to do for them, and, you know, he is planning to plant some things, but to do, plant some things and do a six-foot wooden privacy fence, you know, that's not part of his budget. And so, without their contribution of any sort, you know, I don't understand how we could put any kind of a burden on him like this to say that he's got to plant trees, he's got to put a six-foot privacy fence, and they don't have to do anything. So, you know, it's a private negotiation that needs to happen between the two of them.
Anyone else want to speak on this item? Hearing none, we'll consider it closed. It's up to the commission now to make a motion.
So, there's no landscaping requirements at all for this site plan?
Just for the, just what you see, some of the travel, travel ways, you have to, when it's residential, no. Condos are considered a single-family residential in the zoning ordinance, and in theory, they're exempt from landscape requirements. There's some landscaping on there that they've done, small, but no, there would not actually be a requirement, because condos, because we sell those, townhomes, we treat those like single-family developments, and they're not required to screen, especially adjacent to similar uses.
Thank you. So, this meets all the requirements of TRS?
The first proposal we got did not. We had some questions. We asked them to make some revisions. That came in yesterday, and yes, that meets the requirements. The technical review committee, as far as all the lands, or, you know, setbacks, drainage, all of that condo plat, yes, but again, these other issues that come up are private matters that need to be, can be worked out and kind of worked into these site plans, case by case. And that's the downside of the applicants not being here. We brought this up before. Plats are plats. The surveyors and engineers can be here representing those guys or speaking on their behalf, but we get to site plan zone changes, CUP's variances. We need applicants in the room or someone that has the authority to do this, especially at the Board of Adjustments where we impose conditions all the time. So, yeah, that makes it tough today that we don't have a property owner here or someone that can actually make that commitment on behalf of the land. So, that's the downside of the applicant not being here, and I'd recommend in the future that all site plan cases, all zone change cases, the applicants be in the room or somebody that has the authority to make a decision, or we have no choice but to sort of punt these things if that's what you all choose to do. If there's a negotiation going on between the neighbors and them, I hope we get some resolution, and we would incorporate it into the site plan. And it may be that the fence moves over further, so like Kendall said, or maybe they want landscaping in lieu of, all those options are on the table, and we're fine with any of them, but at this point in time, we don't know what that decision is, nor do you.
I make a motion that we table it till next month. The property owner can be here.
Motion's been made to table till the October meeting.
I second it.
10 seconds. Question, discussion on the motion to table. Hearing none, all in favor? motion unanimous.
We make Susan Mann leave him.
Item 300, public hearings. Walden Funeral Home is applying for site plan on track at 211 South Beale Street, Parryville, Kentucky.
Hold on a second, I'm gonna get my job.
207 and 211 South Beale Street.
Is it Beale or Bragg?
Bragg, I'm sorry. Apologize, but thank you. Restate that. 207 and 211 South Bragg Street, Parryville, Kentucky.
He's going to fix the screen, and I apologize to the folks that are here. The docket sort of goes the way the cases are filed, and did I mention we had a lot of fees last month? And you see the result of those. Lots of applications were filed, and this is a way busier month than we normally have. So, I hate to have to wait, but it's good to kind of get all this other business, because this is the kind of the, this is the big project that we've had a lot of phone calls about. We want to spend some time, adequate time on this, because there's a lot of folks who want to talk and have some questions answered, as well as the applicant explain some things to us. And again, this is a site plan case, so same criteria. Again, the zoning ordinance is the basis of that. It was reviewed and technical review. There were some things we needed to resolve, but not as many as you think. Interesting enough, the SAPS that are still back here are neighbors next door. They wanted a fence installed, and the change that you have from your first site plan to this one is the installation of a privacy fence all the way along the property of the SAPS and Milburn. So, the applicant is committed in showing that fence that you see on the southern side of that new concept plan. I'll get to that. Let's go to that, but I'll show you something else. There's now a fence that he's committing to because the neighbors asked for one. They made two requests, actually, so there's now a fence. The neighbors also asked if the building could be moved, and we'll let the applicant address that, but there was some negotiation back and forth between the neighbors and this hearing, and their request was a board-on-board privacy fence, which is now shown on your plan. So, everything else on this went through technical review except that fence, and it wasn't required. There's some landscaping that was required for the parking lot, and it's shown on there. It's fairly minor when you have just as few a spaces, but the fence was agreed to by the applicant, and it's reflected on your plan. And we'll back up real quick. Again, this is the area of the property. This is the Walden Funeral Home. This is a vacant lot. The SAPS owns some properties here, and the Milburn property is right here. You see, we're in, again, in the downtown Parryville area. You see a lot of different rooftops. The next air slide we put in here, again, was the old zoning, and I want to point something out on this. Again, we have DT on the corner and DT here. Hard to tell what this zoning is because of the way the old map was, but it is GRA, because you kind of have to just follow around the hole and find the first logo. So, that's the old map. And then here's the site plan and the zoning ordinance, and I think that's kind of where I end it, and I won't get into that right now, but I'll walk you through a few things in the site plan, sit down, let the applicant do what he needs to do, being the applicant. I want to mention a couple things. The funeral home's been there on that property, and this brings in another interesting challenge of our zoning ordinance. In Article 6, we have something called non-conforming situations. So, if you have a funeral home, you have a car lot, you have a body shop, a zone residential, you're grandfathered in. We use the term grandfather, but the technical term is non-conforming situations. So, when you have a business that's there, you can continue to use that business well into the future, even though the zoning's wrong, as long as it doesn't go vacant or dormant for 12 months, then you lose your grandfather rights. We say that loosely, but yeah, you lose your grandfather rules, and you have to come in compliance with the zoning ordinance. So, in theory, this funeral home could have done this facility, which is being proposed a crematorium on the property or entied in with the funeral home, could have done this as an addition to the property within that structure. All that could have happened. No approvals needed, no hearings needed. It's just like any other business expanding their footprint or changing the uses of that footprint. We're doing coffee shop, now we're going to do a bakery. It's just part of being grandfathered in. However, the applicant did not want to expand that existing building, nor thought it was conducive to the operation. He wanted to do a standalone building on a lot that was separate next door that he had purchased, and also construct parking, because right now, he's using parking across the street or on the street. Again, not the best operational setup for a funeral home where you need customers and the things that you do. So, the goal was to put parking to assist the funeral home and build a crematorium somewhere on the properties, so it works operational-wise, and we'll let them discuss that. We've had a lot of phone calls about this, way more that's represented by the folks in the room, by the way. A lot of calls, both sides, just education, or I'm against, I'm for, but one thing was interesting is there was a lot of discussion about how could this even happen? Well, from the zoning guy right here, the planner, we talk about accessory uses and we talk about principal uses. It's not unusual to me that a funeral home has things that happen, whether they be viewings or services. There are funeral homes all over this state that have crematoriums part of it. There are funeral homes that have cemeteries part of it. There are funeral homes that sell headstones, sell product. I don't think anyone do nails or hair, but it wouldn't surprise me. There's things that happen around this state that are different. So, it wasn't unusual when we heard the request that a crematorium was coming in in addition to a funeral home, because that happens, but the reality is there's none in this county. There's none in the surrounding counties. They're further away in more urban areas and bigger cities, and we'll let the applicant discuss that. So, I looked at it like it needs a zone change, or it needs to be done under the non-conforming situation protocols. We didn't discuss this case at all until it was filed, or maybe a couple weeks before it was filed, last month or so. So, again, if any discussion is that somehow this prior project was tied in, it was not. The applicant didn't sign initially, even in that signature of that zone change, in fact, was not one of the first signatures, or even at that point, it was well later after the application was filed, it was discussed that this DT zoning was in progress, or he could file his own application, or he could do it under the grandfathering clause, one or the other. So, we'll let them discuss. Again, the applicant needs to tell you what they're proposing, why they're proposing it, why they think it fits, but we reviewed it as a site plan application, because that's what's been filed. That's what the requirement of our county, parking, drainage, setbacks. There's some flood plan on this property off to one side. There are engineers here, so it was designed to accommodate all these factors, and again, went through technical review, meets all of our requirements. If we get down to wordsmithing what's the requirements, again, the zoning ordinance is there, those items, one through, whatever that number ends up being, at the end, 18, are what we look at when we look at site plans, and it meets all those requirements. So, again, there's going to be some discussion whether we want it or don't want it. That's for you all to figure out, and if that's allowable in your findings, but we don't look at the use, whether, you know, does a car lot belong here or not? If it's, if the zoning allows the use, then we look at the checklist, and that's what we did. And again, there's been a lot of discussion about what a crematorium is, environmental issues, and I want to point this out. Planning Commission has no jurisdiction in air quality issues. There are permits that the applicant can outline on what you have to do to build a facility like this, and who's in charge of that, but it's not our responsibility to deal with air quality. The state of Kentucky or EPA is involved with that, and there are requirements to do these. And then lastly, I'll just end with, we had a lot of debate about these facilities and what they are and what they aren't, and again, maybe just my not being naive, I guess, again, being new to a small county, but these aren't new where I came from at all. Every funeral home has one. Several pet crematoriums all over the county. Every veterinarian has those. It's just out there. I'm not aware of any facilities in the state of Kentucky that have been a problem environmentally. I'm not aware of any where I came from that we didn't regulate through the zoning ordinance that we had an issue with, and again, but EPA is involved in a whole nother element that has nothing to do with the planning commission. There were several conditions imposed on some that I've worked through before to deal with some of those issues, or deal with fences, or sightlines, or those issues, parking. Some funeral homes over time, I've seen grown, 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 and again, several that now have full-blown cemeteries, you know, Islamic cemetery components, I mean, big facilities, big, big, and then real small. So, I've seen every kind. So, again, maybe just being a tad bit naive, I didn't see a big deal when a funeral home makes a request to add a facility of this nature as an accessory use or an additional service to the funeral home. So, I'll be glad to answer any questions you guys may have related to the site plan, but the applicant's here, and again, he can go through all these technical details on this. This gets a little bit out of my expertise. I'll be glad to answer any questions you guys may have.
Any questions for stated from the commission?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add to Mr. Hunter's staff comments. First of all, staff provided a news article to Planning Commission as a supplement to application materials. The commissioners have seen it. It will be entered in the record, and we have copies available if members of the public would like to see this news article, but that's something that's been added to it. And then furthermore, I wanted to concur with Steve on two matters, and the first of those is that clean air is the jurisdiction of the EPA and not this planning body, and second of all, that this commission's review is confined to those requirements that are in Chapter 4. It's the site plan requirements in those list of eight criteria, which are how you all review the site plan, and if the public were to confine their comments to that, that would be for the most expeditious use of this hearing.
Thank you, Henry. Anything else? Okay. Anyone like to speak in favor of this site plan amendment? Please come to the mic, introduce yourself.
Address. I'm the owner and operator of Walden Funeral Home at 207 South Bragg Street, and along with my son Kyle Walden, we own the lot at 211 South Bragg Street. There's been a funeral home in this location for 93 years. I would guess that, besides the uncertainties about a crematory, that most of the public does not know what goes on behind the scenes in a funeral home, to prepare bodies, to serve families. You know, I will gladly go in as much detail as anybody wants me to about either operation. I want to emphasize before I read a four-page written statement that I have prepared, because I think it's important, and I think what we need here is education. You know, I consider myself an expert on this matter. I've got the education, I've got the training, and I've got the experience. Before I say what I was, well, no, I'll say what I was going to say about one thing that Steve mentioned. You know, we initially thought to put this in our four-bay garage at the funeral home. There's plenty of space, there's plenty of room, it's two stories tall, and none of us would be here if I'd done that. And probably none of you, if you don't work at a funeral home, or work for a coroner's office, or work for the medical examiner's office, would ever know that was there in that garage. I'm going to make one instance. I told members of the community that there's a crematory in Versailles. I was told that's not true. I would challenge any of you to go to 230 Crossfield Lane or Crossfield Road, drive whatever it is, and go knock on the door. It's a crematory, and it's been there for over 20 years. I've been in Parryville for slightly over three years, and in that time, I have seen the cremation rate at our funeral home double. Remember, I am a servant of the people, of the public. I serve the needs of families that call on me to handle... I serve the needs of families that call on me to handle their deceased loved ones. Some of those want them donated to medical schools, some of them want them cremated, some of them want them buried, some of them want them a combination of all of that. But the cremation rate in across the nation has, the cremation rate in my funeral home has doubled in three years. In Kentucky and in the nation, it continues to rise at a record pace. I've been an excellent business partner with the city of Parable since we came in Financially, I've supported Main Street Parable, the city of Parable, Parable Elementary Trips to Washington DC, the Parable Commemoration, many youth sports and church activities have been supported by my business. I bought the police department a new computer. When the city of Parable wanted a voice at, what was that thing, Jody, the... Economic Development Partner. The city of Parable did not have $500 to get a voice in that. I donated that $500 to the city of Parable. Ma'am, I'll echo your thoughts. I love Parable. I love the small-town environment, I love walking around town, I love being involved in the town, and I love being there. My home is in Danville, but I spend more time at my business than I do at my home anyway. And we have chosen when we bought the funeral home to relocate to Parable, that is still our intentions. Now, I do not mention all these donations and things for recognition, I mention it to say that I love Parable, I support Parable, and why would I support the city and its activities if I wanted to do something that would harm children? In 2015, for the first time ever, the cremation rate passed the burial rate in the United States. Cremation rate in 2015 was 48.2%, and the burial rate was 45.8%. That continues to go in that direction, cremation's up, burial down, all across the country, all across the world. Projections for cremation according to the National Funeral Directors Association and CANA, which is the crematory association of North America, and burial for the next 17 years are as follows. Next year in 2019, the cremation rate is expected to be 55%, burial 39%. 2025, 64%, burial 30%. 2030, cremation 72%, burial 23%. 2035, and I still will be working then, thank you, 79%, burial rate 15%. How am I going to stay in business if I don't offer a crematory to the 79% of families that choose cremation? Specifically for Kentucky, the cremation rate in 2011 was 20.6%. In 1950, it was something like 4%. Times have changed. Cremation is here to stay, it's the disposition of choice for many, many people, and I'll tell you why. Number one, cost. The average funeral at my funeral, ground burial funeral at my funeral home is approximately $7,500 to $8,000. Cremation is about 30% cheaper than that. You don't need a grave, you don't need a headstone necessarily. Some people that cremate chose not, choose not to have services, it's what we call a direct cremation. But cost is a significant factor in the rise in cremation, lack of religious influence. Now, I know we're probably right in the heart of the Bible Belt here, and that's why Kentucky today is one of the four states in the United States that has the lowest cremation rate. Mississippi's one, I think Alabama, and I don't remember the fourth one. But millennials and Gen Xers really aren't interested in a religious influence with funerals. I know this, I meet with them every day as they arrange for their baby boomer parents The fact that so many family members, I'm sure there's people in this room that have members in your family that live in California, Alaska, North Carolina, Tennessee, you know, when a loved one passes away, you pretty much have a two- to five- or six-day period to have the services. With cremation, that period is extended greatly to allow people to get to where the services are going to be made, and loved ones can attend the services for their family member. When I worked at Preston Pruitt Funeral Home here in Danville, you know, we had family members in New Zealand that wanted to come for their mother's funeral. It was going to take them like three weeks to get here. Obviously, embalming and burial was not an option, and that's happening more and more as family members are being scattered across the country. If there's any Catholics in the room, the Pope in the 1960s approved cremation in the Catholic faith. That is getting more and more popular. I worked in a Catholic funeral home in Louisville for one year, and with members of the Catholic faith, it's becoming more and more popular to be cremated. The Jewish faith as well has approved cremation as a final disposition. There's a growing desire for less environmental impact, and that's why people are going to cremation. And I bet many in this room think just the opposite. When I embalm my body, embalm my body, I put three gallons of carcinogens in that body, and that body is buried in the cemetery, many times in a container that is not sealed. And what do you think happens to those carcinogens? They seep into the ground, they potentially seep into the water table, they're potentially floating down the Chaplain River. So, yes, cremation is a more environmentally friendly choice, and I will give you specific information about that in a minute. Crematories operate under the radar. We plan to build a building 1,500 square foot of wooden construction, white vinyl siding, and a shingle roof. It'll look like many of your houses in Parable. We're even going to try and make it look kind of old-timey, so it fits in with the history of Parable. Other funeral homes, my own funeral home, coroner's offices, medical examiner's offices, whoever might choose to use this funeral home in the future, will enter via the back of the building in an enclosed little area where no one will see anything taking place. Right now, I practically push bodies down Crane Alley for all to see when I take people in my funeral home. That won't be the case when we build a facility. Our equipment is being manufactured by U.S. crematory equipment, cremation equipment in Florida. It is one of the most scrutinized industries in the world today. It is their burden to make the equipment that meets the federal, state, and local environmental laws. The equipment is 100% assembled, wired, plumbed, whatever, when it arrives at my facility. It is 100% operational, it has been tested and retested and tested again, and all the necessary legal certificates and licenses are acquired before we would cremate the first We're not going to have a sign out front that says cremations are us, we're not going to have a sign outside, out front that says the business name, Commonwealth Cremation We may put the name in little bitty writing on the glass front door, I don't know. But nobody driving up and down Bragg Street at 50 miles an hour, as they do, is going to see anything that's operating in that building, is ever going to see smoke coming out the vent stack, is ever going to walk around the block, or walk along the river and smell bodies being cremated. Because that's why there is instruments put in place to operate efficiently, inconspicuously, and without smoke, odor, or sound. I was told that a person wouldn't be able to walk around the neighborhood for the, hearing the crematory operating. To that, I say, give me a break. That's stupid. Come on, folks, that's stupid. Human remains are made up of organic compounds such as hydrogen and water. All organic compounds can be completely transformed into carbon dioxide and water. Modern cremators have a 99.99% combustion efficiency. And all cremation, all cremators built by the United States Cremation Equipment Company fully comply with all stringent federal, state, and local environmental regulations and requirements. And just in case you're still wondering how there's no smoke that comes out of a retort when you're cremating a body at 1,800 degrees, it's because cremators have an afterburner or a secondary chamber that captures the smoke and incinerates it at 1,800 to 2,000 degrees and vaporizes it. I guess at the most, you would see something like vapor, or steam, or something like that, coming out of the vent because of the temperature change with the ambient air of the temperature, of the environment. You won't smell it, it'll be kind of like when you see that mirage thing, you know, it'll be something like that, possibly. I doubt it. Now, I'm sure everyone here has read about mercury. How many know mercury is a natural environment, a natural element? It's everywhere. When we cremate bodies, mercury is emitted from amalgam silver fillings. I had a mouthful before, I had all my teeth pulled, so I'll be safe to cremate. But even the dental industry is advancing so rapidly that if you've had a toothful, tooth filled in recent times, you know that you didn't get a silver amalgam filling. And that's why. Particulate matter is a byproduct of the combustion process. If you have a fireplace in your home, if you ever live on a farm and have the burning barrel in the backyard or on the property, or burn your limbs when you trim your trees or shrubs, you know that as that product is combusted, it has particulate matter. You're not going to see particulate matter coming out of this, this stack of the crematory They're suspended in gas and they're burned up, they're vaporized. According to the United States Environmental Protection Agency, there are many ways mercury emissions are released into the air. Some common sources are municipal incinerators, breaking of used fluorescent light tubes. How many have ever done that? I have. When I was a kid, hit one of those with a baseball bat and listened to it pop, guess what? I just emitted more mercury into the air than a crematory will in a year. Dental facility disposal of batteries is a source of mercury. Household trash disposal is a source of mercury. Residential heating is a source of mercury. The United States Environmental Protections, Protect, Environmental Protection Agency lists the operation of crematories as one of the lowest sources of mercury emissions. Mercury emissions from crematories are very low, and they are not regulated by any environmental That's correct.
Excuse me, this lady's...
That's, that's not the issue here, ma'am, and if you want to talk, I won't interrupt you.
David, David, please just continue your presentation, and we'll do questions in a moment.
Discontinue my presentation?
No, continue, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I didn't want to tick you off too. Under the Clean Air Act, and I will, I will go back to that previous comment, you know, when the cremator is built, it is tested, it is regulated, it is checked by federal and state agencies, and those agencies are who give the license and the certificates. Under the Clean Air Act, the United States Environmental Protection Agency reviewed and updated national air quality standards for all types of possible pollutant sources, including crematory, crematories. The review considered all possible pollutants, including particulate matter and mercury. As a result, crematories were not considered for any further federal regulations. The Cremation Association of North America, or CANA, surveyed crematories in Kentucky and asked if there was ever an air quality or environmental agency in the area that raised a concern regarding the release of mercury emissions from their crematories. The unanimous answer was no. The Environmental Protection Agency also states that crematories statistically represent a 0% of the total inventory of national mercury emission rates because they are so low. I'm not going to say they don't emit, they do, but they're so low. This was based on data collected in 1999, and they're even more sophisticated today. All the U.S. crematories, that's the United States crematories combined, produced a total of 238 pounds of mercury in 1999. I weigh 238 pounds, how about that? So, they produce me in mercury waste, every crematory in the country, thousands of them. I have one further statement. Summing up the matter, Samantha Wetzler, MD, a medical examiner in Virginia, said this, "There are so many variables and so many sources of mercury, both to people and the environment, of which none have been eliminated, not fish, not amalgams, coal plants, industrial emissions, and the breaking of light bulbs. It seems that regardless of what studies one does, no one, excuse me, no one will be able to predict these things. And pointing a finger at crematory as a source that must be stopped seems ridiculous and frivolous. A neighbor putting a fluorescent light bulb in the trash rather than recycling it will create more hazards for the community than any amount any crematory will." But people aren't policing people's trash, are they? Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak in favor of this amendment, please?
My name is Ben Thompson, I'm employed by Walden Funeral Home in Parable at 207 South Bragg Street. I've talked to several citizens of Parable, they're concerned about a crematory coming to town, and I've been told by several of them, you don't live in Parable, you go home at night, you don't care what happens to the community. I'm in Parable more than I'm at home, and I don't live that far from Parable. I'm also a Boil County and Parable City firefighter, and I can't say many people would want to get up at 3 o'clock in the morning and go put out someone's house fire... and go put out someone's house fire that they've never met. Or even more so, go to a car wreck of someone they've never met, not getting paid, and try to help them. I would not be doing a crematory, or have the idea of a crematory, if I didn't think it was for the betterment of the community. I do not believe that a crematory coming to town is going to harm anyone in Perryville or cause any further issues. It will actually be a more suitable way of final disposition than burial. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak in favor?
My name is Mike Graves. I live at 100 North Braxton in Perryville, but I actually own a couple of properties that are within one block of the funeral home. And I would like to speak in favor of almost any small business coming to Perryville at this time. If someone's willing to invest their harder money and do something for the good of Perryville, I think most of us should be in favor of that. I am not an expert on crematories, I'll be the first to tell you that, but I'm confident in Walden's ability to meet all standards. If it's going to look like a normal little house sitting on the street, and that's all we're going to see, then it's a good small business that will help our community. We have recently lost two businesses, that being White House Auto Parts and Tires, and also they've closed down the convenience stores. So we are in desperate need of small businesses in our community, and I think this would be a good example of one to join our community.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak in favor? Hearing none, anyone like to speak in opposition?
My name is Stephen Walker, and I own and live at 205 East Fourth Street, Perryville. Firstly, I asked that my property remains zoned residential rather than downtown. Boyle County Planning Scheme 5.1.6 Subpara 5 prohibits, and I quote, "hazardous material and/or toxic waste disposal sites within 1,000 feet of a residentially zoned lot." That is why I wished to remain residentially zoned, to have this safeguard. My property falls within 1,000 feet of the proposed crematorium, and as currently zoned, several other domestic dwellings do likewise. I therefore request, under that prohibitory section, that you reject the proposal to develop a crematorium. However, as I expect, there will be some discussion about the potential emission of hazardous material. As your planning commission deals with town planning and not environmental protection or public health issues, and as the crematorium proposer has included some supporting material, I'd like to make the following points. The applicant has included a certificate of compliance, which shows that the installation will meet the safety standards of UL 2790, covering commercial incinerators. An examination of that standard shows, at item 1.2, that it is a workplace safety standard which refers only to fire, shock, and carbon monoxide emissions. Item 1.5 of this standard goes on to say that the incinerators are further subject to local and/or EPA regulations with respect to particulate emissions, oxides of nitrogen, and other products of combustion. In other words, the enclosed certificate of compliance places no limitation on noxious emissions other than for carbon monoxide. Only very limited testing of crematorium pollutants has been conducted, but these show emissions include visible particulate matter, carbon monoxide, nitrogen oxides, sulfur dioxide, hydrogen chloride, heavy metals, cadmium, lead, and mercury, dioxins, and furans. In 2014, the Human and Ecological Risk Assessment Journal reported that, and I quote, "Trace emissions from crematories are not regulated at the U.S. federal or typically state level, but neighborhood concerns may necessitate quantitative evaluations of potential local impacts. And local officials may need to rely on such evaluations in order to determine whether and under what conditions to grant or deny operating permits." In short, this is an issue which falls through the bureaucratic organizational cracks, and while you might think you are only responsible for town planning, the local government level is, in this case, where the effectual responsibility lies. As long ago as 2005, the United Kingdom Environment Agency reported that cremation was responsible for 16% of the nation's mercury pollution. Mercury can affect the nervous system, cause brain and spinal cord damage, and is especially dangerous to the development of fetuses, nursing babies, and children. Of the other heavy metals, cadmium can cause kidney, bone, and lung disease. Similarly with lead for children, but also high blood pressure for adults. The most serious condition associated with dioxins is cancer. The applicant also enclosed some promotional material from the manufacturer of the incinerator, along with a block graph entitled "Emissions Comparison", from which one might conclude that emissions from cadaver incinerators are less harmful than those of a school bus or a restaurant. Of course, a bus is a moving object, and a crematorium is fixed. EPA and Clean Air Act requirements differentiate between moving and stationary emitters, so the comparison is deceitful. A more honest draft would also include columns for comparing heavy metal and dioxin emissions, because those are the pollutants which are most dangerous to the long-term health of the community. Crematoriums use water scrubber devices. Where will the effluent water from the scrubber devices normally be discharged? The application mentions that though the property is not located in the city of Danville, if it were, the site would be exempt from stormwater quantity control. But there is no mention of how the effluent discharge will be managed. This site straddles the Chaplin River Special Flood Hazard Area. So what measures will be in place to ensure that contaminated water is not discharged into the river, especially during flash flooding? One further environmental point should be made. The proposed location is in the bottom of a sheltered valley where the emissions will collect. On a hot day, the pollutants might reach right up to the houses and school on the adjacent hilltops. If the incinerator is to run through the night, pollutants would be especially concentrated. Wind effects and the presence of fog must also be taken into account. Thus, even if the facility were generally acceptable, this is not a safe place in which to locate it, and the planning commission's 1,000-foot zoning restriction is somewhat meaningless. I'd now like to turn again to the downtown rezoning proposal. That measure was walked around Perryville, and some people were put under pressure to sign up without fully understanding its potential impacts. The crematorium application has received very little exposure or time for consideration. In conjunction, downtown zoning will remove the protection offered to residential properties by Section 5.1.6 Subpara 5 of the planning scheme. And the compressed timeframe has meant that local government and the community have not had the opportunity to consider the matter in a more fully informed sense. Therefore, I request you reject this crematorium proposal under Section 5.1.6 Subpara 5, as it is an emitter of hazardous material within a residential area, regardless of how that area is described for zoning purposes. Or defer a decision on the matter, request the applicant to provide an environmental impact study, and allow the community some time to fully consider the proposal. And also defer the proposal to rezone Perryville until the Perryville Council, local inhabitants, and Boyle County planners can find a way to achieve their aims without denying citizens the protection currently afforded to residential owners by Section 5.1.6 Subpara 5. Given the failure in joined-up government highlighted by this proposal, your decisions will be responsible for the long-term health of the Perryville community. The proposed crematorium will be a static, long-term emitter of hazardous materials in a valley-bottom site which will concentrate their local effects. It may take 10 or 15 years before resulting clusters of health issues appear, but only your decisions now can have that outcome. Thank you. Could I also say as well, in response to Steve's comments, that I still believe these issues are connected, and the connection is entirely through Section 5.1.6 Subparagraph 5. That is all. And if you look at the cluster of people who have very recently opted back out of the downtown proposal and gone back to residential, it is entirely so they can have this safeguard. In a broader sense, I support all the aims of the downtown zoning, but I do want some protection for the people who live there. Thank you.
Let me just address that last statement. If you or anybody in this audience thinks that this commission is in any way colluding to approve any business in Danville, Boyle County, or Perryville, you got another thought coming, because as long as I'm chair of this, that will never happen, and I guarantee it. I didn't even know anything, and I don't think anybody on this commission knew anything about this proposal till it was sent to us in our packet this past week. And if that's not true, then I've been blindsided. Because I've worked with Stephen on this, in terms of discussion about it, and I know the mayor of Perryville has, and it had nothing to do with this issue whatsoever. And this has just come before us here just recently. So I just want to clarify that from my perspective, to tell you that I was totally unaware of this being presented to us until I got in the packet last week. So I just wanted to clarify that. Anyone else want to speak in opposition, please? If you need to speak, you got to come to the mic, please, introduce yourself. That's okay, it's just a public hearing, and we have that on record. That's why we do it.
My name is Melanie Carter. I live at 310 South Bragg in Perryville. When I went in the gas station last week in Perryville, I saw the green paper on the counter, and I read it. And it said, "Come to the meeting, there's a crematorium coming to Perryville." And I said, I went home, and I talked to my husband. And before I left this morning, the first thing he said was, "Don't get arrested because of this mouth, and don't get on the front of the advocate. So you over there from the advocate, don't put me on there." But then I picked up the phone, then I said, "What would my mom or dad have done in this situation?" I'm from Nunnsuch. Nunnsuch is smaller than Perryville. Nunnsuch does not have a stoplight. We have two stop signs, and sometimes even they are down. So my mom or dad would have picked up the telephone, and they would have called Mr. Walden, which is what I did. Mr. Walden very nicely took his time to talk to me about the crematorium. I have a question for you about the stack. Can I ask, is it okay to ask him a question?
Sure. And David, if you want to respond, go to the mic and respond, please.
Okay. So where will the stack actually be? Like, will I see it? Will we see it? Where will it be? I can't see, I can't see that. Do you have that?
Just like Steve just gave you a picture, Mrs. Carter it is?
Miss Carter, yes. I mean, I'm married, but I kept my maiden. This is way too much information for this man.
This is a picture of a building that is housing a crematory that the same company that I've contacted to build our crematory. This is a building in a residential area housing a crematory. You can see the stack on the top of the building. Looks like anything on the top of a home or any other business. So that's what it looks like, ma'am.
Thank you. You can keep that, I just kind of wondered what it looked like. I would also like to say that when I was speaking with Mr. Walden, I said that I guess when I moved to Perryville, I never thought I'd live down the street from a crematorium. I mean, who says that? I lived down the street from a crematorium. And then I thought about environmental issues. I'm going to be honest with you, I Google things, I look stuff up. Some people say it's harmful, some people say it's not. Who do, you know, what is the answer here? I don't want this to be a personal attack against Mr. Walden. He's trying to run a business. I want to be cremated. So I feel a little bit hypocritical, saying, gee, I don't want to live down the street from a crematorium, I want to be cremated. So I just wanted to ask that question about the stack, because I didn't really know. I hope that you all will vote your conscience. And my mom and dad also wouldn't have called it collusion, they would have called it in cahoots. So I'll just share that with you. Thank you so much. And how do you do this all the time? Because honestly, these are so boring, these meetings, terribly boring.
Anyone else like to speak in opposition to this amendment, please?
My name's Margaret Chase, and I live next...
Next pick-up, ma'am.
Margaret Chase, the name. I live in the apartment home 217 South Bragg, right next to the proposed site. I also have nothing in general against crematoria. I'm a client of Mr. Walden's. Before I begin, a couple of points I would just like to mention. Regarding the crematorium in Woodford County in for sales, I have spoken with the two funeral homes in operation in for sales at the moment, with the gentleman there who operate them, Clark Funeral Home and the Morgan Funeral Home. Clark Funeral Home has their own crematorium. It's not located in any residential environment. Morgan uses the crematory attached to the cemetery in Lexington. The gentleman at Morgan told me that the crematory in existence, which I asked him about, that I was told about, that operates in for sales near Kroger, preceded the development of Kroger by about 15 years. And when it was built, was built in very... Now, I have no way to know this, I wasn't there. But there wasn't much in the area. So he had no idea who uses this crematory. He doesn't, and neither does Clark Funeral Home. Now, this is from these two gentlemen. I just wanted to bring that to your attention. I think it is the intention of most funeral directors to operate their crematorium, if they have a personal one, or if not, to use one that is distant from a tight residential district. There is such a thing... Well, first, I want to mention one thing briefly. The chief... The chief medical office of British Columbia in Vancouver, the Vancouver Sun in 2006 released this statement. "The risk of childbirth is higher, brain abnormality among babies whose mothers lived near crematoria." Mercury again. Should be located, should not be located, close to any residential area. There is, I don't know if Mr. Walden ever researched this, there is such a thing as eco-friendly cremation, or bio-cremation, which is versus flame-based cremation.
Well aware.
Right. Now, is this cost prohibitive for you to do? It's a new, fairly new process that uses water and potassium hydroxide to reduce the body to ash, bone ash. The Mayo Clinic is available to speak on this to the general public in Brad, in Minnesota, where I grew up. Bradshaw is the first and only firm, I believe, in Minnesota to provide this revolutionary service. But why is this a development that is gaining popularity? It's because there are incredibly, an incredible amount of environmental issues to be concerned. It requires the removal of medical devices and implants, lithium non-tox, non, lithium-ion batteries are involved, and left intact in the body can explode, damaging not only the crematorium, but whatever might be near. So we have to consider the structure and the dangers of the structure. There are people with multiple metallic devices in their bodies these days. Even breast implants, if they're made of silicon, or something else is released. But I think all of these devices and the funeral director or his crematorium, crematorium personnel have to be aware of these devices before they can be cremated. Now, that's something that we have to put great deal of faith in, that they know this, their kin knows it. Very often, it's a mystery. And so they go in there, I'd like, David, to address this, if you would.
You have to.
How, yes.
Yeah, you have to, right now.
How, how these people, how this is determined, and are these devices pulled from the body?
Thank you, Mrs. Chase. I'll be glad to address that. And while I'm here, I'd like to address several things Mr. Walker said that are not factual. First of all, in regard to explosions, you know, I don't know if you know this or not, but when a body comes to me, with all due respects, they're naked. You can visibly see pacemakers and defibrillators that are implanted in the chest of deceased people. One of our education criteria and training criteria is the removal and recycle of those devices, if the body is being cremated. If they are being buried, they remain intact and are buried in the ground. If I send a body to a crematorium with a defibrillator or a pacemaker implanted in their chest, and it exploded, I am liable for the repairs of that crematorium. I don't think any professional funeral director is going to be so negligent or ignorant to do that. So yes, I am aware of that, and they are surgically removed by the licensed embalmer. I've done it many times.
David?
Ma'am.
Where are these items stored?
They're stored in the embalming room until they're recycled. In the preparation room in the funeral home. Also, any other metallic parts that are in the body, hips, shoulders, knees, are recycled. Mr. Walker, there is no water whatsoever associated with the crematory that I intend to install. No scrubbers, no water, there will be no water plum to it. It doesn't exist. Nitric oxides dissipate in sunlight. I'm not a chemist. Yeah, I had organic chemistry in college and in mortuary school. That's been too many years ago to remember. But I know that many particulate matter that are released by many agencies dissipate once they're in the air. Nitric oxides dissipate by sunlight. Thank you.
Go ahead, Ms. Chase, do you have more?
Just briefly, and this big common knowledge, I'm not sure. Department of Public Health, state of Georgia, source of chemicals is the body burden of lifetime exposures that is stored in fat and tissue. May include mercury, dioxins, hydrochloric acid, nitrogen oxide, sulfur dioxide, carbon monoxide, all emit and carried by the wind in vaporization. Now, there's controversy about what this extent of, extent of these gases in vaporization. But of course, the greenhouse gases are another thing, along with the vaporization of other chemicals, we have the release of greenhouse gases, because cremation temperatures, as David mentioned, are exceedingly high, to 1800 degrees Fahrenheit. Fat people release more dioxins than others. A vegetarian diet will minimize dioxins on cremation. So perhaps we should start a program in Perriville. David said that cremations are increasing, which I think we all across the states are aware of. But of course, the highest cancer rate, which we probably all know too, is in the state of Kentucky. Deaths by cancer, be more specific. Now, I think David has settled a few things in my mind about this, but he has been using, as far as I know, the crematory in--
Somerset.
I don't know much about it. I don't know where it's situated, but I'm sure that it is not surrounded by homes. I don't know how long it's been there. But we could continue, of course, to use it. I am afraid with these cremation rates rising, that there will be a great deal of business for David, should he install this, will come from multiple counties as well as our own. I don't know what this might signify in terms of, it would be good for David, I'm sure, or his son, who would operate this. But I think we can't disregard these factors of the, what is included in this vaporization. And the thing that I am most concerned about is that we are in a valley, and all of this may lie within. Might be insignificant in the beginning, I'm not sure. There's a big unknown. But I wish you would consider some of these factors. I like David immensely, I think he's done a lot with the community. But I live next door, I don't want to move. I am very chemically sensitive, I am full of heavy metals myself. There's no metal, except something that was erroneously left in my body after gallbladder surgery, a large metal clamp. David, you should take note of that. But I am extremely chemicals, chemically sensitive, and I do believe, and physicians believe, that mercury has affected me. You'll see me jerk my head occasionally, affecting my nervous system. My landlord has been, landlord and landlady have been very gracious about the fact that I am chemically sensitive by using toxic problems, non-toxic things around the home to get rid of those, et cetera, in the trees. But I had all amalgam fillings removed about 15 years ago, I'm sure a lot of us have done that. There are mercury tattoos in my gums. There are other instances of problems that have developed as a result of this. The vapors were driving me crazy, that's why I had it on. The vapors from the amalgam, the mercury. I'll close, I've been talking too long. But I think that we have to consider a lot of factors here. Doesn't bother me that there's going to be a little house there that's called a crematorium. What bothers me is the vaporization, and the contents of the vaporization. So that's all I have to say.
Anyone else like to speak in opposition?
I just want to ask one more question. I forgot it to be up here, sorry.
This might seem a little bit crass, but, and this is probably not your purview, but I'll ask it anyway. How do property values, residential property values, hold up when there's a crematorium down the street? And do people, let's say I was selling my house, and they say, "What's that building?" Oh, I mean, I have to say, well, that's a crematorium, right? I mean, am I legally bound to say that's a crematorium?
I'm not, we're not lawyers.
Oh, and there's Mr. Smith just waiting to, he probably has no idea, I mean, I mean, as, you know, I feel like that's a valid question. I don't feel like my house value should go down because, right? I don't know.
No. Penn State University--
You have to be--
Well, what authority do you have to determine her house value? I guess is the point.
There is a Penn State University study into this, and it said house value is moving down by 3.6%, but we've got a little bit of red alert in place where you are.
I don't want to cut anybody off that wants to oppose me, so please come, step up to the microphone.
If you make it expedient, please.
I will do my best. Chairman, thank you. Mrs. Chase, I respect everything you said, I respect everything Mr. Walker said. You know, I'm a husband, a father, a community member, you know, and all those things you all talked about are important to me. But I'm also an educated funeral director, and a trained funeral director. More than likely, at least for a temporary period of time, I'll be moving my residence to the upstairs of the funeral home in the very near future. I'll live right on top of the crematory. You know, but I smoked for 30 years, I'm not worried about what comes out of the crematory. You know, I would encourage you, if anybody would like to take a trip to a crematory, give me your name and phone number, we'll go on a field trip. I'll take you to 20 of them. I'll take you to them all over the state. In Floyd County, there's two, and Stanville, Kentucky, population 206. You know, I don't know if those 206 people objected to it or not, but there's two crematories The one in Somerset is directly behind a subdivision to the north. There's also one in downtown Somerset that I don't use, next to restaurants and doctors' offices and buildings like the one in Versailles. That's right in McDonald's back door. So I can't speak to the long-term effects, I'm 60 years old. I'm sure I've, you know, done my share of harm to my own body. But as I said earlier, I love Perriville, and I consider myself a representative of Perriville because I have a business there. I support everything in Perriville, and I would not do this if I thought it would harm especially children. Thank you all very much for listening to me.
Any other questions? Anyone else like to speak?
My name is, I'm sorry, my name is Pete Bottom, I live at 310 West Fourth Street in Perriville. Excuse me. I was actually talking whenever you asked about the people in favor, and I just, I missed my opportunity. I am in favor of David putting this in. Just like Mike said, we've lost businesses in Perriville, and we need to do what we can do to retain those businesses, and the expansion of this is, I think is a good idea. I would just like for you to consider voting yes for this today. Thank you.
Any other questions, or anyone else want to speak? If not, we'll consider the public hearing closed.
I have a question, the point was made about the legal issue of disposal of, I forget the terminology, but the gentleman quoted something in our regs with regard to that.
It refers to prohibition on hazardous waste or toxic waste disposal sites within 1,000 feet of a residentially zoned property. There's no definition in our zoning ordinance of hazardous or toxic waste disposal sites. It's, I suppose, an issue of first impression for this body, whether or not the crematory constitutes a hazardous or toxic waste disposal site.
Thank you. Any other questions from the commission? Jeff?
I just, I guess to clear up some things that have been said from this hearing, this site plan, and a previous hearing, is my understanding that the Perriville City Commission has the final say on what we just passed on the zone change for Perriville.
Correct.
So we took the information, simulated it, debated it, passed it on to the City Commission as the ultimate purveyor of that denial or approval. And then my understanding, this hearing is a site plan. It's a, it's a building that's going on a site, and our obligation is to hear a site plan hearing. And I think it was previously stated, if this crematorium was to be placed on a structure that already existed on the property, we wouldn't be discussing this today, there would be no discussion about it, there would be no hearing, there would be no approvals, there would be no anything else. There would be no anything else. And I always get kind of, I have mixed feelings when people come in with site plans and we get sidetracked on what's the use of when we don't determine the use of property. We have to look at zoning issues and the plan. So having said that, those are all points that I think, that I gathered from the discussions we've had today. One, you know, they're trying to, they're trying to put these two together. City Perryville has the ultimate say on the zone change and approval we made for their city with their input. And the use of the property that we've spent all this time discussing, if he didn't come for a site plan for a separate building, we wouldn't be having this discussion. So I guess what we have to determine is the site plan that we've had brought before us.
Yes, Vince?
I agree with Jeff. It was said that all the bulleted items were met for the site plan. Even though emotionally I agree with a lot of the, a lot of discussion, I agree with the implications. I also disagreed with people who smoked for their whole lives and never have smoked myself. So, but that's not part of my issue. I have no say on that matter. And conversely, I have no say on the other things because that's not part of our charge as a committee. So, you know, I do have a question for, where did you go? Oh, okay. Why, it has to do with the site plan and not any of the emotional issues, which I totally, I'm a pretty emotional person and I can relate to a lot. No, I know, but it'll be somebody, like in every other thing, I just might mention this, that, yeah. Why is the building located so close to the Sapp's property rather than closer to your establishment? Because it seems like it's right on their property line. I mean, I...
The direct reason for the location there is going to be for a drive on the right side of the building to access the back of the building to keep people from seeing, you know, the entry of bodies into the building now, you know? We're doing that for the public. Now, most people don't want to see bodies going in a building. I mean, I wouldn't if I didn't work for the funeral home.
No, but I mean, they do in the regular funeral home.
Yeah.
What's the difference?
We can do that if you, if y'all are fine with seeing deceased.
I'm not saying that you should or shouldn't. I'm just, that's a question that I'm bringing up for our commission is because usually they don't, I know in their property easements, you're not allowed to build as close to the property line.
I don't think that's...
Is that property? What's the...
Well, I'll mention, yeah, so, again, the development was reviewed under the DT standards. Again, that connects these two together. The setbacks are different. The technical reason why it's that close has to do with the parking lot. Our travelway requirements are 20-foot, 24-foot, perfect when you do 90-degree parking. Those parking spaces are basically, I think they're eight-by-18s or eight-by-19s. I don't have my glasses right in front of me. You can't get the parallel, the parking, the 90-degree parking and a travelway where two cars can back out. So if we shifted the building five more feet, for example, we would lose probably one of those aisles of parking on one side or the other, nor would we have a compliant travelway. And again, the goal is to get this parking off the street, off across the street and build somewhat of a parking lot that meets our standards on the site. Kendall designed it to our zoning ordinance requirements for a two-way travelway, dual parking, 90 degrees. That shifted the building over that close. And the DT has more liberal setbacks, again, than a traditional residential zone or even highway commercial. I would just also point out, whatever motion you all make, I think it needs to be conditioned on the downtown rezoning being approved by the City of Perryville. Because again, we're approving a site plan. Perryville may choose something different on the zoning altogether and that is their authority to do. We just make a recommendation. If by chance they don't approve that blanket zoning, then the site plan, I think by default, needs to go back to the drawing board or the applicant needs to file their own case.
And there's also the, well, the reason I brought that up was because there's supposed to be a fence and there's related to a height. So I was thinking, why would anybody see anything anyway?
Well, it's only a six-foot privacy fence. We heard the building's going to be 18-foot, so we're going to see the eve roofline and some of that structure above the fence. The neighbor still wanted a fence. They requested it and the applicant put that in there at their request.
I also think it's an issue with, the car is not six feet or more high pulling in.
Little more technical, Vince. We get, you know, days go shorter and in the evenings, as you pull in and would turn into that, the headlight trespass could go to the neighbors. So by putting the landscape buffer, that's why we buffer the edges of parking lot fences in lieu of landscaping, that you could see light trespass as we moved into people driving at 4:00, 5:00. All that, all that parking to the south potentially would trespass into these neighbors. The board-on-board fence is the best scenario to deal with that light trespass.
Yeah, I'm just picking up all the things I can think of for or against. That's not my, my issue is not to take issue with one or the other, it's just to bring up the points and make sure that we think about it. That's all.
Anything else? We ready for a motion? Well, our public hearing is over.
Chrissy Sapp again at 217 South Frank Street. We were told that they were going to be going to the engineers to discuss moving that property in four more foot, which is supposed to be eight foot from our property. It's only four, so...
He chose not to do that.
But that's, how can that be his choice?
No, the standard is not eight foot. The standard is that, that'd be if we were residential. We reviewed this under the downtown rezoning, which has, has...
Okay, then I take my duplex back to residential because that's just not right. How is he going to be able to maintain behind a four, a building with four foot? You know, we discussed that that was going to be covered with the engineer, that that property being moved in. Why can't their driveways, why do they have to have two rows of driveway? Why can't they have, why can't they move the building further back and have all their parking in front? Those are just my questions.
Again, I want to make sure I clarify. This neighbor called us and asked that a privacy fence be put up, at least along theirs, and could, could the applicant consider moving the building back? I conveyed those to the applicant as we do when we get requests and they discussed that and he very concisely submitted the site plan with the fence, chose not to move the building, didn't give me a reason, but I anticipate it because they didn't want to lose the parking. So that's up to them. Again, we don't micromanage these sites down to designing it. You know, we get these requests, spin the building, move the building, can you make it brick? I mean, that's tough for us. At the end of the day, I just conveyed the comments, your site plan reflects a fence, but no additional setbacks at this time.
We ready for a motion?
I make a motion for approval.
Jeff moves. We approve? Vince seconds. Question, discussion on the motion to approve.
Does that motion carry the condition that Mr. Hunter added about Perryville approval of the zone, Chairman?
Approval has to approve zoning change.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, it does. Thank you, Henry. Question, discussion on the motion to approve with those conditions. Perryville approved the zone change. Hearing not all in favor?
Yes.
Vote unanimous. Thank you. Under New Business Budget Committee report, Terry?
Yeah, we issued an RFP several weeks ago for legal services. We got three firms that responded to that.
Folks, if y'all need to have a conversation, leave it at the hall, please. We're still conducting business. Thank you.
Can we take a break for a minute?
Just an update to the commission on the RFP for legal services. We issued the RFP. We got three legal firms responded to the issuance of the RFP. Each of the budget committee members plus Jerry reviewed those proposals and we rated them then based on several, several criteria. And based on that evaluation of the criteria, we did identify what we consider the most advantageous offer. We went back to them with request on several clarifications. We received those clarifications and we're satisfied with their, with their clarifications. And so the next step is a written contract needs to be developed so we make sure there's no misunderstanding and so we expect to bring a recommendation to the Lang and Zoney Commission at the next meeting as to who we should go with in terms of legal services.
Personnel committee has no report. Advisory committee has no report. July zoning permit, you have a copy of that in your pocket.
Goals and objectives. I think we need Mr. Hunter.
We do. So I don't think we need a motion to approve any of those items because they're not anything that conducts business. And then item number five, the goals and objectives conference of plan, we need Stephen for that and I'm going to give him.
Bring him in here. We're going overtime.
Already missed one appointment.
We're on item five, goals and objectives conference of plan.
You know what? We can do that next, we can do that next month, not a problem. I was going to tell you that our goals and objectives are out of date and we got some options, but I was going to recommend we talk about it next month. Let's just put it on there.
I accept your recommendation.
We had a long, long meeting and there's a lot of questions out in the hallway for me up here.
That's fine.
Terry handled the RFP, so I don't have anything else.
Okay. Any other announcements or issues with item six? If not, your motion to adjourn. Wendy makes it. Terry seconds. All in favor, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.